Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd first await a motion to leave the non-public and seal the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, I first, before we call the roll, I would just like to thank everyone for coming in for Student Government Day participants here. Really excited. We've got some tough conversations ahead, and I'm glad that you guys are going to be taking the votes on all that.
[laughter]
But I just wanted to thank Council Boylock for providing this. And if you could just stand and stay standing as I read out your name. Kelly Moriarty. Maggie Pataki.
She's not here.
Not here yet, okay.
She's not here.
All right. Elise Sedum. Logan Reese. Sophie Williams. Josh Theadi. Isha Shaw. Oliver Fitzpatrick. Riley Collins. Amanda Youssef. And James Johnson. Could we give them a round of applause? So on Wednesday, they're going to have, you guys could sit back down, you guys are going to have their own agenda and meeting in this room. Look forward to that. Thank you again for signing up, you know, Portsmouth works because people show up to be a part of it, and you guys are leading by example tonight. So, thank you so much. Before we stand and read the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd just like to take a moment to publicly address the events of last Thursday. I know that I'm not alone. In fact, it's kind of surreal being on the dais with high schoolers who were, a threat was called into their school. We found out about it because the city manager let me know at late that evening on Wednesday that school was going to be canceled because of a credible threat. Superintendent McLaughlin just publicly acknowledged, not only made the right call, but made it with just the correct tone, recognizing that this is an incredibly difficult situation, even when nothing at all happens. I'd like to thank Chief Newport, who always looks great, but he looked tired on Thursday morning. You know, he'd spent all night going after the guy who was apprehended and, you know, hopefully will be brought to justice. I, you know, I'm always a dad first. It's tough to think about anything else than the worst possible situation when you hear that. I look forward to the budget conversations that are going to be happening around the corner. We can talk about the steps we can take to make our schools that much safer. But I hope that people, whatever aisle you're on, also think that, you know, guys who made the threat the other day, you know, gun shouldn't be in his hands, you know, shouldn't have full-body camo, you know, assault rifles on the trunk of his car, ammo, like, that's, we've got to do something about that, too. So, we're going to do our bit. I just want to thank everybody that was, really met our expectations of the City of Portsmouth, exceeded those expectations, and kept our kids safe and kept them at the forefront. And I just want to, sorry, Kelly, I don't know what this.
This is from Assistant Mayor.
Oh.
There's other students.
They're department heads.
Okay. So, I will, so thanks on that. I didn't realize, could the other department heads, I don't have a list of all their names, I don't think, so, could the other department heads please stand up now that are, no, sorry, the students.
The other students.
The students that are acting as department heads. Brian always does a great job, all right. What a great reminder that our government is way more than the talking heads up here that get elected, that it's obviously, it takes a village to run the city. So, thank you, and I'm looking forward to Wednesday. I've cleared the day, so we'll be happy to have lunch with everybody. But if we could all, you guys are already standing, if we could join them and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this, having these extra folks threw me off a little, so we're going to do the roll call now, Kelly, as politely reminded me.
Mayor McCacken.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councilor Taber.
Here.
Councilor Denton.
Here.
Council Moro.
Here.
Council Bagley.
Here.
Council Lombardi.
Here.
Council of Leylaw.
Here.
Council Cook.
Here.
All right. So, we do have a few proclamations. First is Portsmouth Rotary Centennial Day. Whereas the Portsmouth Rotary Club is a dynamic group of over 140 members committed to living the Rotary International motto of "Service Above Self," united with 1.4 million Rotarians around the world to make things better, one person at a time. And whereas Portsmouth Rotary was chartered on March 28, 1923, 100 years ago, and is celebrating its proud history of service at the same time as Portsmouth is celebrating its 400th anniversary. And whereas Portsmouth Rotary is an organization made up entirely of volunteers who donate countless hours of community service and fundraising in the Seacoast area year after year. And whereas Portsmouth Rotary is committed to helping our community and the world at large to unite and succeed in humanity's common pursuit of health, happiness, personal and professional fulfillment, and peace. And whereas the club donates the money they raise to both local and international nonprofits, sponsoring and leading a number of fundraisers throughout the year, including holiday tree and ornament sales, that enable them to support worthwhile causes and charities that are making a difference in so many people's lives. And whereas Portsmouth Rotary is taking the opportunity, on its 100th and the city's 400th, to make the significant donation of over $100,000 to the community it serves, including specific donations of $30,000 to the city for the purpose of two projects that will benefit our community and future generations now and for decades to come. Half of the funds go to plant 100 trees as part of the Portsmouth Anniversary 400 Trees for the 400th Initiative, and half go to making the playground at South Mill Pond more accessible. And whereas, like the landmarks memorialized in the club's iconic brass ornaments, Portsmouth Rotary is an institution where fond memories are made and bonds created that last for lifetimes, and our community would be poorer in so many ways without you. Now, therefore, I, Degle McCacken, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim April 20, 2023, in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, as Portsmouth Rotary Centennial Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate the essential contributions of Portsmouth Rotarians to the past, present, and future of Portsmouth, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 17th day, April 2023. We'll get that back to the Rotary.
Proud Rotarian.
This, I would like to first thank zoning board member Beth Margeson for bringing this to our council and to our attention. Another proclamation, this, Bringing Awareness to Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas we believe that every child is entitled to love, care, security, and protection from abuse, exploitation, and neglect, we know that in 2022, there were nearly 2,000 ports of child abuse in New Hampshire. And whereas child abuse can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities that promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children succeed thanks to the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Degle McCacken, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim April 2023 in Portsmouth as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon the residents of Portsmouth to support programs and initiatives that create positive, healthy environments for children in this city and throughout the state, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 17th day of April 2023. And if you were wondering what the blue ribbons are, those are to raise awareness today for that month. And finally, I don't always have as many proclamations, but one, Recognizing Earth Day. Whereas Earth Day is April 22nd, founded in 1970, when there was no APA, no Clean Air Act, no Clean Water Act, and there were no legal or regulatory mechanisms to protect the fragile and beautiful nature of this blue and green planet. And whereas, Earth Day now is the largest environmental movement in the world, and with this year's theme, Invest in the Planet, seeks to persuade businesses, governments, and citizens to invest in our planet, to improve our environment, and give our descendants a better and safer future. And whereas Portsmouth declared itself an eco-municipality in 2007, remains committed to the goals of greener energy, and to Think Blue Sustains and Active Sustainable Practices Committee, and with the leadership of the Department of Planning and Sustainability, is crafting a climate action plan as a pillar of the 2025 master plan. And whereas Portsmouth is grateful for the grassroots efforts of citizen Earth advocates rallying the community around those goals into the dozens of organizations such as Portsmouth High School Eco Club, Seacoost Students for Sustainability, and Portsmouth Climate Action, participating in the 2023 Day of Action. Now, therefore, I, Degle McCacken, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2023, as Earth Day in Portsmouth, and call upon the residents of Portsmouth to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 17th day of April 2023. And I believe we have, Your Honor.
If I may.
We have some folks that are, we have Lori Lee Godfrey, Evy Douglas, and Grace Webster. And, okay, I'll come, if you're taking pictures, we'll come around to the front. I'm already too tall.
Got to get him down on a lower level.
What's that? Shirt dis.
Trust me, be a short person.
Your Honor, if I may, I'm going to motion to suspend the rules to bring forward Item 15A, just to talk briefly on the Earth Day events.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, this Friday, April 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00, at the Connie Bean Center, there are several dozen groups putting on a local sustainability fair. Anyone who's available, I highly encourage you to attend. Meanwhile, Earth Day itself, there are several events going on in the morning when it comes to Earth stewardship. One of them's being put on by our own Conservation Commission, the Great Bog Trailhead on Heather Lane. That is from 9:00 AM to noon. And more excitingly, I don't know if either Lori Lee, who's a member of the Sustainability Committee outright, or if Evy signed up to speak, but there will be a rally at 2:00 on Earth Day at the South Mill Pond parking lot. And hopefully, I'm not getting too far ahead here, but I've been told that students in our schools, when they have homework that weekend, so they can participate in both the stewardship events and the rally.
Well, they don't have homework now. Thank you, Councilor Denton. So, we're going on, next, I'll await a motion to approve the March 31, 2023, special city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, under recognition of former city manager Cal Caney for his 20 years of service to the City of Portsmouth, await a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend Council Rule 44, which requires a work session regarding the naming of a city facility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, a while back, the children of, on behalf of Cal and Betsy Canney's children, who are crying about the process for getting a plaque installed in town dedicated to their dad for all of his years of service, we looked at doing so and were able to come up with the idea of honoring Cal by renaming the Prescott Park Marina in his honor. So, is Cal here, or no?
He is. The whole family's there.
He is. Oh, I didn't even know that. All right. Come on up, Cal. You want to say a few words?
Mayor. Mr. President, members of the council, I want to thank you, first of all, for the honor and remembrance of the times long past, this having been my first appearance at the city council in 32 years. I've missed it. But let me just say that I appreciate the effort that you people put into the work that you're doing for the city. I do follow it. I know that it's frustrating and controversial at times, but just remember that it's your city, and whatever you do, do the best you can for yourself, your community, and your country. And usually, that's all we ask for. As you get to be my age, you know, the future begins to look a little dimmer. And I want to particularly note to the students that are here tonight, that it's your future, and learn how to take care of it, because we're going to need all the help we can get. I appreciate everything you've done for me and for the city, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Cal. So, we'll have, we're getting the sign made, so that will be down there this summer. And Cal, I look forward to having you down there and cutting the ribbon on that. You know, it's great that the students are here to, to be here for this, because it's important how we honor those that give so much of their time and their life to serving other people. And you certainly did that, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart of building a city that I was born into, and, you know, I thought you did a pretty good job, so. Appreciate that. So, thank you, Cal. Next up, we have the recognition of community members of the University of New Hampshire cheerleaders. So, the UNH cheerleading team won the 2023 Cheerleading Association All-Girl Grand National Champions. Do we have members of, not here tonight?
No, they couldn't make it.
Well, thank you for making Portsmouth proud and for all the work that goes into representing your sport and the work that you do ongoing. Next up, we have the first of two public comment sessions, and I will be waiting, just to clear up any confusion, for the accessory dwelling units, not listed because we'll make amendments to that on second reading of ordinance C under ADUs. This is a little inside details, but we're going to be suspending the rules to allow comment on that, or I expect to, I'll ask to suspend the rules to allow comment on that. First up is public comment, and we have Irish Mike with the topic of public, children's safety.
Good evening, Mayor. Michael Harden, Portsmouth Orchard Street. Any child that's killed in a school shooting is one child too many. As adults, be it as parents, teachers, law enforcement, it's their job and a right to ensure a child's safety. Just about every school in America, all we have protecting our kids is a framed poster stating this is a gun-free zone. The president, most politicians, the president and most politicians have anywhere from five tinted ARP security protecting them each day. Any federal building, courthouse, airport, or sports arena has metal detectors and ARP security as we enter. We have three sides, the left, the right, and our kids. Our first and foremost concern should be their kids and their safety. It's not a question of what's right or what's wrong, if there's a, or if there's a budget to install metal detectors and ARP security. America wasted, America wasted over $130 billion in Ukraine. Out of the, out of the 115 million schools in America, the $130 billion would have given each school a budget of $1 million and put 10 armed officers in every school in America with a yearly salary of $100,000. Or you got, you got two idiotic fights, the left fighting to ban something that's maybe 1% of the problem, and you got the right fight for mental health. Both fights, both fights cost millions, that would be more than enough to protect every school in America. I don't care what race, what color, what creed the shooters are, my only thought is protecting the kids. This week, I heard probably the most idiotic comment made by a city official about taking guns out of the shooter's hands. Don't forget the Tennessee shooter went through all the necessary background checks, had whipping strain, and last of all, the weapon she used could be bought in any city in America with all the proposed whipping bans. Our kids' safety is not a party issue, it should be the only issue. And if you feel it's not right to have metal detectors and ARP security, ask the parents of the Connecticut, Texas, Virginia Tech, or Tennessee shooting how they feel about the idea. And I could be wrong, but I feel they'd be behind you 100%.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up, Paige Trace, on the topic of Portsmouth.
This is all on the same topic. This is on any topic. People refer to this.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the high school, welcome. Paige Trace, 27 Hancock Street. I have a bit of a parable that is about tonight and McIntyre. Before I start it, I'd like to say that very sincerely, I wish you'd given us more information before asking us to make a decision of yes or no, to buy or not to buy. I do feel that you're asking the residents to vote on something or to make a statement in which they don't have the information that they should have about where you intend and how you intend to move forward. So, this is called the boondoggle agreement, a boondoggle settlement agreement. First, they read it, then they break it. What next? Will they sell it or give it away? First, they can't wait to prove how quickly they can negotiate a settlement agreement. They do whatever is necessary to order it, even with next-day delivery. Wow, they're so much better than the others. It arrives all right with directions and everything. They even have a chance to send it back if it's not right. Only they don't read the directions, they don't even read it, it appears. So needless to say, they don't think to send it back for a better model. They embrace it until they realize it's got teeth and it bites. Send it back? No, they can't. Didn't they read? Oh, well, the original had bells and whistles, so this one has to also, right? So make it have bells and whistles now. Oh, look, careful, handle with care. Oops, they broke it. Moral of the story, if you run too fast before you learn to walk, you'll get hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up, Esther Kennedy, oh, Peter Huda, on the 2454 Lafayette.
Good evening, Peter Huda.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can pass it on. You can get it.
Peter, you dropped one page.
Peter Huda, 280 South Street. If you all have your papers, I will inform the rest of the public and everybody here as to what this is all about. Pursuant to Section RSA 677.2 to 677.4, a motion for rehearing of a local legislative body, city council. This is an appeal being brought publicly presented at the April 17, 2023 Portsmouth City Council meeting. We, the people, are appealing the decision made at the April 3 city council meeting on the 2454 Lafayette condo project. This petition for appeal is requesting a rehearing by the city council to reverse the non-compliant decision made on the 2454 Lafayette Road condo project and send this request to the planning board for a review as required by the RSA. At this meeting, the developer attempted to change the RSA compliant plan for 2454 Lafayette Road of 95 condo units for sale with 20% workforce housing units affordable to the household with an income of no more than 100% of the median income for a four-person To a non-compliant project of 95 apartment rentals with 20% workforce housing units with the same 100% AMI for four-person household in violation of RSA 67258-4, which states workforce housing means housing which is intended for sale and which is affordable to a household with an income of no more than 100% of the median income. Workforce housing also means rental housing, which is affordable to the household with no more than 60% of the median income. The New Hampshire Section 67258 supersedes the city council, the city zoning ordinance. A local zoning ordinance cannot override the requirements of the State of New Hampshire RSA, specifically per RSA 67258-4, which defines workforce housing. The Planning Board Department or the city council or the City of Portsmouth does not have the authority to change the definitions or the requirements of this RSA. Pursuant to 67460, after receiving notification of restrictions that were granted, the applicant has 30 days to appeal, not 15 months. The covenant agreement of March 21, 2019, that was presented as approved by the planning board by the city manager is applicable to Kate Street Development, owner of applicant property located at 428 Route 1 bypass, not the 2454 Lafayette project. See the action sheet of March 21, 2019. See the action sheet of March 21, 2019.
Pete, even that you're reading, we'll-
Yep, you can read the rest. I just wanted to give the public and the readers at home an idea of what this was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Esther Kennedy, same topic.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. Ms. Huda and I are presenting this to you for a rehearing. We are asking you to look at it. We have the right under RSA 677-4 to, as a citizen, to bring it forward and ask you to send it back to the Planning Board, have them look at it, have them look at it for housing, have them look at for equity for those people that need housing. You have committed yourselves in saying that you're for providing housing in our community, and we truly believe that your vote changed that. So we ask you, we're kindly asking you, bring it in front of you all tonight to take it back and do what's appropriate to the RSA's and send it to the Planning Board and have a true meeting like any other applicant would have to do for a change. We kind of felt that it was slipped in, and I'm not saying that any of you understood that. However, now is your opportunity to send it back to the Planning Board and have them have a true discussion with the developer to make sure everyone's needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, Susan Stary of the Cemetery Committee.
Good evening, Susan Stary, Broad Street, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm co-chair of the Cemetery Committee, and I just wanted to give you a brief update and the community of what's going on with the cemeteries this season, which is spring. Our second year of cleaning our historic cemetery headstones is starting by participating in Portsmouth's 400th by cleaning 400 headstones in four weekends. Starting Saturday, May 6, 13, 20, and 27, we will clean the 400 headstones in Cotton Cemetery, which is one of the five cemeteries whose entrance is on South Street. Once these stones are cleaned, we will have only part of North and all of Union Cemeteries' headstones to clean out of the 3,000 that we are responsible for. We are confident that by the end of October, we will have them all cleaned. The next step in our Cemetery Committee restoration plan is straightening headstones with trained volunteers. We plan on training these people in May and start right away when competent volunteers are ready. The final step in headstone restoration is fixing broken headstones. Again, we will use well-trained volunteers to accomplish this final project. The state of New Hampshire has approved the plan for our straightening and repairing broken headstones. They recognize John Lord of New Hampshire Old Graveyard Association as an expert on cemetery restorations. John has been working with us from day one. He's come down and trained all our volunteers in cleaning. He has been a vital support to this group in how we should proceed and what is and isn't possible with volunteers. However, I want to state that this is like phase one of the overall restoration project for our cemeteries. After this, we're currently in the works to fixing the seawall at North and Union Cemeteries. That's now in progress. But we have Point of Graves, which needs extensive work for whether the climate change is interfering with the cemetery and what the water levels are down there. And also Pleasant Street and Point of Graves have wall restoration that needs to be done. And then we move on to the major tombs of Whipple and Langdon and other people that are here in Portsmouth. So I just want to let the community know that we're progressing. We couldn't do this without the DBW and the State of New Hampshire Historic Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next up is Byron Maddow. Do you want to speak here? I'm going to have the ADUs speak separately. Okay, we'll do it then. All right, we have Arthur Klow as the, on Zoom.
Hi, Arthur Klow, 431 Pleasant Street. I'm here to speak about the 24, sorry, I'm going to get the street address wrong, about the Lafayette Road project. The covenant that you all agreed to in the last council session wipes out workforce housing at that unit. Because originally, the developer came in saying that they were going to sell units, which would be at 100% of average monthly income for the people who would be buying it. The way that that covenant is worded, it allows them to rent those apartments at 100% of AMI, which is not what workforce housing is. It's 60% AMI. So at $109,000 of average monthly income, workforce housing would be $1,635 a month for qualifying residents, family of four. What you voted on changed that $1,635 to $2,725. That is a big change. And what I heard from an explanation from one city councillor was, well, if somebody buys the property and then wants to rent it because they move out of town and plan to come back, then they can rent it out at 100% of AMI. So I don't understand why we are creating an income property for somebody, buy the place and then rent it out and turn it into non-workforce housing. But that doesn't matter anyway, because the way that it's written, the owner, whoever the owner might be, can rent it out for 100% of AMI. This council has effectively decided that workforce housing is not necessarily something that you really want to be voting for. What I'm seeing is voting, is that your votes are supporting developers, developers who make a lot of money, and I'm sure will contribute to campaigns both for reelection and the people whose ambitions we know go well beyond the city of Portsmouth. You need to rescind it. I applaud Kennedy and Huda for asking for the rehearing. You've made a terrible mistake. It's smoke and mirrors, and we're not fooled. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Arthur. That is our first public comment. We will have one again on the McIntyre. So first up is the public hearings and vote on ordinances and/or resolutions. I will state at the beginning, when we get to the portion of the ADU, we don't, we did not advertise it as such for a public hearing because we had made legal changes to that. It will come back for a public hearing at May 1st, but considering the confusion that I increased when I told people that they would have the opportunity to speak tonight, we'll wait a motion to hear from the public tonight as well as in May. But first up, public hearing, second reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.411 Cemetery Committee Membership and Term. I'd wait a motion to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the May 1, 2023 City Council meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Is there a presentation tonight? I think so. Any further questions? I think last time we realized that this was simply to amend the quorum rules for them. All right, so any public hearing speakers on this topic? I'd open the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Any further council questions and deliberations? So we can, we can vote to pass this, and then it waited a motion to suspend the rules and have third and final reading? No? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that moves on to third and final reading. Next up, public hearing, adoption of resolution on a proposed resolution authorizing a bond issue and/or notes of up to $1,083,500 for additional costs for constructing the Greenland Road Recreation Facility, also known as the Skateboard Park. I'd wait a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a presentation on this, or?
We do not, Your Honor. We just have the proposed resolution.
And then, any questions on this? We'll hear from the public then. If you'd like to speak to, for, or against, I'd ask that you keep your comments in your head and your heart, limited to three minutes. We're not going to put on the timer, but brief is always better. And take it away. I see Amy May standing.
Hello, Amy May Court, 47 Taft Road. I'm here before you tonight, speaking on behalf of the Skateboard Park Committee in support of the updated cost of the skate park, including add alternate to the skate park lights. I know this is a full meeting tonight, so my brevity here is not for lack of passion, but for the sake of everybody's time. We have put forth a big effort to raise money through community outreach events that we've organized, and at this point are able to contribute $26,000 to the city. This is all donations from our community of amazing people, many of whom are here tonight. And I also just want to add that many of these donations have actually been quite small, so this is a real grassroots thing that we're doing here. And we have plans in place to raise that much more, hopefully $26,000 more, at a skateboard festival and a brick fundraiser, which everyone should keep their eyes peeled for. We know that most, if not all of you, are really excited about this project just as much as we are, and passing these remaining funds tonight will put the city in the position of full steam ahead, and I can't tell you how grateful we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Hello, my name is Jessie Court, and I'm speaking as a skate park committee member, a Portsmouth High School student, and a skateboarder. I have some friends here tonight to support this motion for the remaining funds to build the skate park. We are all really excited about this park, and we are very grateful that the city is finally building a safe and usable place for us to skate. As Portsmouth skateboarders, we will take care of the park and make sure others do too. This skate park is going to be a great place for kids and adults to learn and progress their skating. We hope you pass this tonight, and we will be skating it by the fall. Thank you so much.
My name is Christine Burke, and I am here not as a citizen of Portsmouth, but to speak on behalf as a K-12 Wellness Coordinator in the public schools. I think that this project for the skate park is significant in many ways, and when it comes to the health and well-being of our students, I can say that just listening to the beginning of this meeting, the awareness of the stress level of our students, of the anxiety among us students, and the data that just keeps coming in and coming in and coming in, for the things I've had to deal with around COVID, for the things around school safety, our children are now living on a daily basis in their fight-and-flight mode. And what that means is that they're constantly waiting for the next thing to drop. And that level of anxiety is counter-inducative to their health, physical, mental, emotional. You know, I've been working a lot in training around ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and the impact that those have on overall health. And, you know, for the first, I've been doing this work for a very long time, but for the first time, we actually have data that says, you know, if you experience really adverse things as a kid, it increases your chances of heart disease, cancer, diabetes, early death. I mean, the data's there. So it's finally, people are saying, oh, wow, there's something we can actually do about these chronic medical conditions by helping our students deal with adverse childhood experiences. So we can do a lot on that end. But what's more significant is that the next round of data that has come out, specifically from Christina Bethel at Johns Hopkins University, is around the impact of positive childhood experiences. And those experiences have actually been proven to counteract the impact of ACEs. So if a person who has an ACE score of four or more has a 60% chance of being diagnosed with depression or anxiety, if you add in two to three positive experiences in that person's life in their childhood, it drops that to 10%. So if we're looking for a way to truly promote the well-being of our students, this initiative is one of the best that you can support. Because it's not, it speaks for the city, it speaks for their commitment to providing activities for everyone to enjoy. I mean, I'm not a skateboarder, but I'll tell you, I think that, you know, a place where people can gather for social interactions, for being outside, being away from screen time, you know, those guys over there, they're serious about the skateboarding, and I know for years, they've been kind of shunned and kind of, you know, driven off. I worked at Keene State for years, and the librarians spent every day just chasing them off the walkways because they weren't supposed to be there, or they weren't supposed to be on the rails. So this is an opportunity to say, and I think the other piece about skateboarding is that it's an individual sport, it's not about being, whether you make a team or not, and it's about setting your own personal goals, and it's about falling and getting up and trying again, and falling and getting up and trying again. And that's what builds resilience. So when we look at what we want to do for our kids, we may not be able to control, you know, pandemics, and we may not be able to control as much as we want school safety, but you have the ability to support this initiative, which actually can counteract the impacts of some of those things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve DiTrollio, 54 Taft Road. So I think, I feel that there's a lot of support within the community for this, so I'm not going to labor that point. We all remember last time we were here to allocate funds for this and how many people showed up. So I would just like to remind anyone, if you're feeling a little hesitant about assigning more money to this, to maybe not think of this as an expenditure or an obligation, but to reframe that and think of it as an investment and an opportunity in this town, and some of the things that are happening over on that side of town particularly, like if we had the skate park and the rail trail, and we have the dog off-leash area over there, and whatever's going to happen by the Collins well, I'm not sure what's going on over there, but there's a lot of things that could be done to get dividends, I guess, if you want to consider it as an investment. It could even be, if we were creative, a new economic engine for this town that we don't currently have. I mean, we have others, but this could be a new one. So I would urge you to think about it in that regard, and go ahead and support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Unlike Mr. DiTrollio, I need notes, so I apologize. I'll try to be brief. Dave Cosgrove, 174 Echo Ave, a member of the Skate Park Committee. I'd just like to share some brief thoughts. You know, I really believe this recreational facility will serve as a shining example of how we all came together during a rather dark and somewhat divisive period in our history. For the sake of the wellness that Ms. Burke just spoke about, especially for our youngest and most vulnerable, we should all be proud that we have such an opportunity to pass on a critically needed recreational space for generations. I'd like to remind those that Haven Bin Modern's project, that we were able to utilize existing city-owned land, thereby saving taxpayers likely millions of dollars. This new park will become the gateway into the West End that we all deserve and have worked hard for. Instead of looking at sand and gravel mounds, you'll see a new and exciting space that some have worked to deliver for almost two decades, and some of those people are here tonight, Chris Rice, Esther Kennedy, and others. Unlike many recreational spaces, I'm very confident this will be used year-round and frequently. The ongoing development of the rail trail will make this an even more accessible and exciting hub for our residents. We knew this from the beginning, it was one of the primary reasons why we picked the site. At the end of the day, we will not only have an action sports park, but we'll have a significant amount of green space, too, at the site. In fact, the green space footprint is larger than the skate park by a sizable margin, and we'll have parking and hopefully lighting that's needed for safety. Come picnic there, throw frisbees around, or maybe just come take a load off and watch them exciting and creative, happy people do things. There's so little space for unstructured play in the city, so this is a rare opportunity. My advice is simple, just come and take advantage of it. This isn't just for action sports enthusiasts, it's for everyone. I look forward to seeing this park evolve over time and encourage those in our community to step forward to help shape the rest of it, especially our youngest residents. especially our youngest residents. While the skate park might be the most important face to me personally, I know there will be a sizable blank slate for other opportunities to come. To the kids and young adults in the audience tonight, let this be an example of what can be accomplished when you set your mind to it and fight for something that you believe in, believe that it's worthwhile. To the council, I thank you for your ongoing support, the city staff, Public Works Director Rice and all his staff, Director Henley. I thank all of them, and especially thank my fellow committee members and the public. I ask you please fund this final authorization so our community can enjoy this resource for decades to come. Thank you very much.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. The first thing I'd like to ask is I'd like to have everyone stand up here that's a kid that's going to be skateboarding. Can y'all stand up? Any kid? And now I'd like to have all the student government kids stand up. Everyone, stand up. I think we have to look around at our city first and foremost and see the students here. I counted over about 50 in our auditorium tonight, making a statement. So thank you all.
We've been at this a long time. The Skateboard Committee is amazing. Amy and Dave took the helm, and we have all these other people on the committee. They've done an amazing job. It's time. It's over, let's get it done. The kids, when Seamus Durkin came to me and said, Esther, we need to start it again, try to get another skateboard park, he made a movement. And I think that movement, with your vote tonight, will have an amazing park that all these gentlemen and young ladies can be a part of and be proud of. I know for one, I might even have to get my old skateboard park and just step on it once at the park. But thank you, and I hope that you vote for this proposal, and it'll be over, and we'll move forward.
We have two speakers on Zoom. Anna Nettle, first up.
Hi, thank you. I think all of what I was about to say was kind of covered, but I'm going to skip around a little bit. But my name is Anna Nettle, I've been a teacher in Portsmouth for 25 years, which is about as long as we've been trying to get a skate park. We're really excited for all the support we have. I did want to just share, just from a classroom perspective, as a teacher who, you know, went through the pandemic, through the classroom lens, and immersed in the hearts and souls of our kids, I can tell you that while we've come out of the lockdowns and masks and the scariest physical health challenges, we are facing some scary mental health challenges, as Chris Burke had also shared. Each day in my classroom, I'm finding I'm asking guidance about or directly reaching out to more and more students who I'm concerned about with regards to especially social anxiety and various other stressors, but mental health status is struggling. I'm finding so many of them feel like they're alone in their feelings and their experience. Their feelings of loneliness and isolation happen even when they're surrounded by friends at times because they're not connecting in the same way authentically. By creating positive opportunities to have peer-to-peer authentic connections, we support every single child. I think having a publicly accessible skate park, all the research backs, you know, the health benefits and the mental health benefits of providing a skate park, I won't cover all that. But while in the schools, we're providing, you know, extra counseling and one-on-one, and a lot of that extra support to address this issue that we're seeing, it's broad, it's much broader than we can reach in that way. And providing a community-wide, publicly accessible group collaborative opportunities for our kids to connect and support each other, and bringing the skate park to our community, I think, is a huge step in addressing this issue. They build new community, you know, in a park like this. We're going to provide that opportunity. And it really breaks down a lot of barriers, from gender, race. I mean, we're living in some pretty divisive times, and what they've found in skate park communities is a lot of that melts away. And if there's ever a time we need that to melt away for our youth, it's right now. And I believe in this project. Thank you so much for your support.
Next up, Sean McDonald.
Go ahead, Sean. Sean, if you can hear us, go ahead.
You just have to unmute Sean. I'm going to assume that Sean was speaking on behalf of the Skateboard Park since he's a member of the committee. But I'm sorry we can't hear from you, Sean, due to technical difficulties, seemingly. Okay. Any further public hearing speakers? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional council questions or deliberations? Counselor Blaylock, then Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is not a question, it's more of just a statement. I want to thank everyone, all the speakers and all the advocates coming tonight. I want to thank the committee for all their hard work, but I really want to thank the kids for showing up. I mean, to have these kids here for Student Government Day is awesome. To have you guys all show up tonight and speak and show how passionate you are about skateboarding. But I think this is a true investment for Portsmouth, our community, especially our youth. And that's why I'm up here serving. I'm up here serving to make the future of Portsmouth better, not necessarily today, but I think tomorrow's going to, with this skate park, we're going to be a much greater city, especially the people that make up this city. So I want to thank all of you. Thank you.
Counselor Cook, and then Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Everyone in the audience here looks up here and sees me as the city councilor. And that's one of my hats. But the most important job that I have, first and foremost, is that I am a mom. And I'm a mom to a 17-year-old who's a junior in high school. I know firsthand what it's like to watch teens go through, I guess, the struggles that they've gone through the last several years in high school, how difficult it is now because so much is done online. Everything's on a screen, it seems, that it's hard just to find an outlet for your average teen to get outside, to get, to be active in the community. And for some teens, that's even more difficult if you're not part of an organized sport or an organized activity in school. I know firsthand, as somebody who skated in high school and had friends that were skateboarders, how important it is to have a space where that's okay. And so I look at this through the lens of a mom who sees the mental health challenges that we have to address and the need to provide an outlet for all of our youth in the community. But then I have to put on my city council hat and say, okay, this is an additional million-dollar expenditure. And as a city councilor, that means that certain trade-offs. You know, this is a million dollars that I'm going to vote tonight to spend on a skate park because I think it's a priority for our community. That means other things we have to put on the back burner. But I think that when we're talking about youth and we're talking about mental health, we have to make sure that our priorities are straight. And in this case, this is a priority for me.
I'll try to keep it brief, Your Honor. I just want to, once again, thank Counselor Kennedy for getting this started. And then I think it's worth noting that when Seamus brought it to her, I believe he was a junior or senior, so he was already as a high school student looking out for the kids that were coming behind him because he knew it wouldn't get built fast enough for his high school days. So I think that really set the tone initially, that this was, you know, a project that came from the heart. And I really admire the committee's work and all the kids keeping this in the forefront of the news, all the different events and organizations and things they've done have just been amazing. And then on a personal note, I can't believe I'm going to be voted for a skate park. In the 80s, you know, skateboarding was not a crime thrasher. It's just unbelievable to me that we get to vote for something like this now, and how far we've come from where skateboarding was when I was a kid to where it is today.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Any other questions, comments? Just to thank you for everyone coming out again. You guys show up. Good constituents. Thank you, Counselor Kennedy, for helping Seamus navigate the process early on. It's a highlight of my previous term on the councilor that we came together around a good idea. So if it's a good idea, it's always going to get the support, and this was a good idea. Just like to note that when Greenleaf was originally proposed and built, it was reaction to moving skating out of our community. You know, nothing against the folks at the time that did that, made the best of that situation. But what I love about this is that this process of building this skate park and funding this skate park, designing this skate park, we haven't got to building it yet. Hopefully tonight, we will start that process. But it's been so much more about recognizing that skateboarders and those that want to take advantage of this action sports park are as much a part of our community as anyone is. That we are investing on it, that the community came out in such support on this is a really good feeling, because it means that we've grown as a community in the 20 years since we originally, you know, banned skating and built a skate park on the outskirts of town. So I think we should be proud as a community for doing this. And I can't convince anybody, like Esther and apparently Kate are both skaters. I am not a skater. My center of gravity is way too high. But I'm impressed, and I was impressed talking to Dave a long time ago on this, Dave Cosgrove, that, you know, I've always loved sports, and, you know, I found a passion in rowing, and it allowed me to develop a sense of self and build confidence. And with rowing, it was hard, but, you know, physical injury was never kind of around the corner. I've been really impressed with the resilience of skaters because inherently, you have to follow to get better. And falling is scary. It's definitely scary for me as a kid older. But having the confidence to try something, knowing that to start a trick, you're going to fail, and it's going to take a long time to get better at that, I think is a message that we can all hang our hat on, is a message that we want to promote in Portsmouth. So I can't wait to vote for this tonight, and thank you guys for all the effort that you've brought to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your Honor, we need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, you're spending a million more bucks. Got it, all right, all right. Kelly, would you please call the roll?
I'm going to make sure there was.
There was a motion, I believe.
There was, yes. Counsel Blaylock made the motion, I believe. So Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Dutton.
Yes.
Counsel Moreau.
Yes.
Counsel Bagley.
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi.
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Mayor McKecon.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, guys. Just for the run of show, we're going to get through the ADUs, hopefully. Then, meaning, we're going to take the second reading of that, then the city manager's items. And then, before we get to the McIntyre, we're going to pause to have an opportunity to dismiss the kids. Not that, you know, we'd love for, they could probably do a pretty good job voting on that, but would like to make sure that they get home. So just folks in the audience to know what's coming next. So next up, we have the second reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 10, accessory dwelling units, Section 10.430, use regulations, Section 10.440, table of uses residential mix, residential businesses and industrial districts, Section 10.814, accessory dwelling units, Article 11, site development standards, Section 10.1110, off-street parking, Article 15, definitions, Section 10.1530, terms of general applicability. I'd wait a motion to amend the ordinance as presented by the legal department. Further, move to continue second reading and hold a public hearing at the May 1st, 2023 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I would now await a motion to suspend the rolls to invite the public to speak on this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so if you would like to speak on the ADU ordinance, and again, the reason why it's not a public hearing tonight, although for the purposes, it doesn't matter because we're still talking, is that we have to, the legal department made changes to the ordinance that have to be, we have to approve before they can come back for continuation of second reading. But if anybody would like to speak now, please come up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Byron Maddow at 17 Fields Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of easing restrictions on the ADUs. As a member of this community, I'm passionate about creating more affordable housing options and proposing sustainable, inclusive communities. ADUs are proven to be a viable solution to the address these pressing issues, and I strongly urge the council to consider following points in favor of easing ADU regulations. There's a positive theme in the room this evening around future generations. The former city manager honored this evening, paid deference to future citizens, the student government, the folks supporting the skate park here. Looking through that lens, focusing 10, 20 years down the line, what can we say that we have done to support those future citizens? Do we continue to lock down our land and sell out our climate by prioritizing cars and single-family homes? Or do we make the difficult choice, maybe unpopular choice, to show the true cost of a car-centric city design? On the flip side, there is a strong, unwavering drumbeat of resistance to change and growth in the city. It points to multi-use buildings and the cries of loss of character. It points to small iterative change in neighborhoods and names to prohibit individuals from altering their own properties to meet their needs and the needs of the market. It cites RSAs and bad faith to stop projects that do provide housing. It demands the material, style, size, usage, and placement of dwellings without consideration to the sustainability of our city, community, and greater environment. It warns of congestion, lack of parking, loss of charm. It plays on our fear. It comes from fear and control. I want to state that my main premise, from my point of view, is that people are more important than cars. They are more important than congestion. They are more important than perceived and subjective loss relative to neighborhood characters. People are the city, they are the community, and the forces of stoppage and stasis, decline, and municipal entropy are prioritizing inanimate objects, nostalgia, and profit over a dynamic and fluid community. I have more to say on this, but I think there's a hearing next time, and to your points earlier about brevity. So I just want to sort of wrap with highlights and main points, which is, I'm going to say it simply, there's not enough housing in the city. The cities, our cities generally are spread too thin. The operating costs for cities supporting the road miles is unsustainable long-term. Multi-generational living promotes community, mental health, and free childcare. It more gracefully allows for the progression of people through life, from students to families into retirement and beyond. And it supports small-scale local developers, the kind of developers that hire in the community and build the city at the scale it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Byron. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Elizabeth Bradler, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. Please move the ADU ordinances forward as they were written with the legal changes necessary. As was shared at the work session, 750 square feet allows for a very spacious ADU. There is a difference between an apartment and an accessory dwelling unit, which should be just that, an accessory. The ordinance might as well be rewritten to allow apartments to be added to single residential lots. lots if they offer 20 by 20 living rooms. Adding one parking space may decrease the size of a small yard, and it will have to be carefully considered. However, a larger yard or even a house with a driveway may easily accommodate one space. This single space could be part of the existing driveway, or the space could be part of a yard with pavers. It would be one less car on a street in a neighborhood which is already struggling with parking issues. The single parking space per ADU was a very generous compromise. I'm sure if Mom and Dad moved into an ADU, they may want to keep their cars. They would like to be able to park close to where they live, not down the street or on the next block, especially if they have a walking disability, are in a wheelchair, or are carrying groceries. The aesthetic guidelines that came from the existing ordinances and the request to be more, excuse me, for more clarity would be more acceptable. They will save money by knowing what the basic parameters are right out of the gate. They are simple and yet allow for individual lots and personal desires. There is nothing environmentally friendly about building anything, especially something small for one to four people to use, such as an ADU. The sheetrock, insulation, heating ducts, plumbing, wiring, framing, siding are all bad for the environment. It could be estimated that a single ADU would fill three or more 20-yard dumpsters with nothing but demolition and construction waste. Let's not talk about the portlets for the workers. If one chooses to be environmentally friendly products, you could triple the cost of an ADU. ADUs are not being built to save money. They are being built for parents or for children. They are not going to provide low-income housing. These ordinances were changed merely to update the current ordinances and make them better. Let's stop the posturing at the last minute and agree that the ordinance submitted for your approval are a far better version of what exists. They create guidelines which respect neighbors and neighborhoods, and the ordinance promote positive changes which the various surveys which were sent out, those results were asked for by the public. Thank you for your time and for your approval.
Thank you, Liz. Next.
Good evening, Liza Hewitt, 726 Middle Road. I urge you this evening to amend the ADU ordinance as it has been approved by the Land Use Committee and the Planning Board with the changes proposed by the legal department and continue the second reading and hear the third reading on May 1st. The ordinance, which has been reviewed and improved over a year's time by multiple boards, city hall staff, and Portsmouth residents, is well-crafted and is one that will work for all residents in the city, both ADU builders and ADU abutters. Due to the cost of building these ADUs, I do not believe that there will be many units built that will be offered for rent at anything near affordable prices. But I do agree and support that they will offer an alternative for families seeking to allow family members to remain in a home-like environment. With that said, it pains me to see a city councilor attempting to derail the approval process by proposing last-minute motions to change or, in some cases, delete sections of the ordinance that have been debated and revised through proper channels over the past year. Mr. Bagley, apparently you have been busy over the past week posting to Facebook with your proposed amendments. It saddens me that you had to bring politics into this, but I'm not really surprised. So let's address your motions because apparently the public will not be able to have their input when you make those motions later in the meeting. I might remind you that all of the motions that you have made have already been discussed and rejected by those who have shown up for the past year to respectfully debate and compromise on the best possible ADU ordinance for the city of Portsmouth. Your first motion, move to remove all optical, excuse me, optional aesthetic requirements for attached ADUs. I am not sure what else I can add to the discussion of why this is a bad idea. That has not, that has not been much more eloquently explained by both Councilor Moro and Mr. Cracknell at last week's City Council work session. They both tried to explain to you why the architectural standards actually make the ADU process, approval process, easier to navigate. That being one of the goals of the City Council in revising the ADU process. Neighborhood character was also one of the biggest concerns voiced by the abutter survey collected by the Land Use Committee. You might also want to consider that the city of Concord has a separate committee whose sole purpose is to review the architectural characteristics of each ADU proposal. This is how important they feel architectural design is. Your second motion, Mr. Bagley, move to remove any parking requirements for ADUs. I might remind you, Council Bagley, that parking was one of the biggest concerns voiced in the abutter surveys. While the committee initially discussed requiring two parking spots per ADU, as was suggested by the 2017 Rockingham County Commission, a consensus of the Land Use Committee, Planning Board, and City Staff was to compromise and require one spot. Parking for ADUs should not be considered in a vacuum, but through a more considerate process of parking as a whole throughout Portsmouth. And your final motion, move to increase ADU size to a maximum of 850 square feet. Where did this come from, Mr. Bagley? It almost appears you are just throwing things against the wall and hoping something will stick. You had an entire work session last week during which to bring up a change in size, and you never did. You never once suggested changing the size of the unit to a maximum of 850 square feet. We're far too, we're too far into the process for you to be making motions to change the size in the second reading. Furthermore, you have been all over Facebook and the public comment section of the Herald saying that you want ADUs to be affordable. Well, increasing the size of, by 100 square feet is not going to make the units more affordable. The added square footage will not only increase the rent, but will be more costly to heat, thus reducing the affordability of the ADU unit. I ask the remaining eight city councilors, three of whom sit on the Land Use Committee, to vote no to Councilor Bagley's motions later in the meeting, as they are not in the best interest of the proposed ADU ordinance. I urge you to amend the ADU ordinance as it has been proposed, as it has been approved by the Land Use Committee, the Planning Board, and the Planning Department with the changes proposed by the legal department and continue the second reading and the hearing and hear the third reading on May 1st. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liza. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Petra Huda, 2A South Street. I urge the council to pass what was put before you and what the amendments that were put for legal passed at the work session last week. Then, since I'm guessing we don't get a chance to talk about any of the amendments that Council Bagley is putting forward, I'm still trying to relate, Councilor Bagley, to how you're looking at this, especially for the aesthetics. So since the kids are here, and I'm trying to figure out a way to make this all relate, I want to give you a scenario. So maybe you could put yourself in the place of somebody out there that could be dealing with something like this. So this side of the dais here with you four, this is a neighborhood. You all have the same chairs. You all have the same house, same thing. You're happy with your house. You got everything laid out. But then comes Council Lombardi. He's not happy. He wants something else. Council Lombardi puts forth a request for a chair that is three times the size of yours. He leans over into your space. He puts all kinds of stuff that you don't like and obtrudes in all your area. And oh, by the way, he can do this by right. So this is one of the things that abutters are going to need to deal with on this, when you don't have the same thing as everybody else, and you don't care about the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I'll let that go. Again, Council Lombardi is not happy with what he wants to add on. Maybe he wants arms. And now he's going to spread out into your area. He's going to put something in that, oh, it could be non-permeable, but it's just taking over your area. To me, when I look at what you're putting forward here, I'm having a hard time relating to what you're saying and not actually putting forward and thinking about the rest of the neighbors that are going to need to deal with this. I don't get the feeling you put yourself in the place of even having to deal with this. So I ask you, if you put yourself in the place of having this as your neighborhood and somebody wanting to change something that has already been established and looks like everybody else's, I do not understand why you would support something not going forward to be aesthetically pleasing to the rest of us. Hope that wasn't too confusing. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Any other speakers?
Good evening, Mayor, Councils. Tracy Kozak, 28 Walden Street. I didn't prepare a speech, but I just thought I'd come up here because I think I'm the only person in the city that is one of the 15 that went through the ADU process. So I have an ADU. I'm also a designer, and I've, in the past, been on one of the land use boards, so kind of seen this from all sides. We initially got into the ADU idea because we thought it would be a good way to host exchange students, but our house is so tiny, we don't have room. And we thought, we bought the house that already had one, but we used it as a playroom for the kids to grow up. And then when they got in high school, we wanted to, we wanted them to learn about different cultures, but we couldn't afford to travel abroad, and we didn't have room for an exchange student. So we thought we'd host some J1 students in the summer, which we did for one year. It was great. And it also supports the businesses in Portsmouth, which is, which are seasonal. It helps promote diversity in Portsmouth, which I think is critical for world peace and empathy and compassion and just overall good things. That only lasted a year, though. Then my mom got sick with cancer, and luckily, I was able to keep her in our little ADU while we gave her care for her last days. And then my mother-in-law is now sick, so she's there. Sunday, I hope to use it as an art studio. It's just great to have these options for families as lives change and people go through different stages of life and perhaps older, when we need a little extra income to pay our taxes, we could use it for that. Who knows? On the proposed amendments, I was part of one of the work groups last year, and I apologize for not paying attention at all the changes, but I think it's gotten way too complicated. I think our zoning ordinance is super powerful, and you can use that to the advantage for massing. The restrictions and limitations in the proposed amendments for massing are great. I think they work. But I think it could be codified to make it a little quicker and easier. The design standards are something that belong with the neighborhoods that have design standards. The historic district is a great way to do that. But you have to be careful to apply it broad-based. For example, requiring the style of the ADU to match the style of the house will create the visual effect of a pattern of larger houses. And I think that would be more damaging to a neighborhood that has a pattern of small houses. So for example, if you change some details of the ADU, perhaps it doesn't have the same roof pitch. Perhaps it's a different color. You could create a smaller scale and a greater human intimacy to the pedestrian walking through rather than feeling like they're walking through what used to be single families and now is McMansions. So the wording of these design standards is, could be, it could backfire. And I think it is best left to a committee such as the HTC to review those in areas where it's very sensitive in a very different language than even Lincoln Street or certainly other parts of the city where you, it really calls for a different style and a different treatment. And you could write eight different design standards, but then you're getting into form-based zoning, which could be the answer. But since we're not there yet, I think a strong code is the way to go. Thank you for your time on this. I know it's been a long haul.
Thank you, Tracy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. And I think Tracy is accurate that we do need ADUs. I think we all have agreed to that. I think it comes down to logistics and process. Council Moro and others, Senate on Land Use Committee, and worked with numerous individuals many hours to come up with a plan that they believe, and then the Planning Board seconded it, to have ADUs in our community with the right dimensions, the right amount of parking, the right amount. Now, I don't agree with all of it, but they went through the process, and the process, they heard people. This last-minute change is wrong. And I'm really perplexed why it didn't come through the process. I really am. I heard the explanation that it was because you didn't know if the mayor was going to be there or not. That's poor. The bottom line is, all these people took it through a process, and you have councilors who brought it forward, you have a planning board who brought forward the appropriate way to start an ADU. Now, if we get going on the ADU, and you actually get a lot of people, because the bottom line, it always has to be used as a living space. I'm not sure it can be used as an art space in the current information. But, you know, I think that as we move through this process and finish it here, I would ask Council Bagley to pull his motions and really let the process be done. Take the advice from other councilors. Take the advice from your planning board. And again, if in the end, we need to relook at it down the line after people have tried it and people have tried to work through it and there's some kinks, and that's when we do it. But it has gone through a process, folks. Let's be done with that and finish it up. So I ask you not to vote for the changes. I ask you to vote second reading through and then get it to third reading and final. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Any other speakers? All right. Oh, one on Zoom. All right. Zalita, you're up.
Hi, Zalita Morgan, Richards Avenue. I'm just perplexed with all this last-minute parade of changes to a process that took this entire community resources, staff, months, months. People coming to meetings, participating, compromises. What's happening here is an attempt to derail due process. And I agree, you know, I think Esther Kennedy spoke really well. There was a process. The process was done. It's not perfect. You know, Council Bagley, you can preserve your proposals and suggestions for the next revision, for the next time, you know, but you have no right. Actually, you have the power, but that doesn't make it right. Doesn't make it right to everyone who has participated, attended, and engaged respectfully in all the discussions. I strongly recommend this council, and I would really expect, Council Bagley, that you would remove your motions in respect to all these 11 months and staff and people and who actually engaged, and you did it. Coming in the 11th hour to derail due process is really not okay. It's not ethical, actually. Again, you have the power to do it, but it doesn't make it right. So please, just councils, just move this forward. Bring, Council Bagley, your suggestions for next time. Review it, but don't stall. Something that's needed and something that this community has come together and in agreement. Please, let's stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Zalita. Any other speakers? Any other speakers? Seeing none. Any questions at the council? Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Legal inquiry. Would this be appropriate time to suspend the rules and bring my motions forward?
Currently, yes, you could. You could request to suspend the rules.
Is there a motion on the table, though?
We need to move.
We have a motion to approve as amended by legal, but I think if Counselor Bagley wants to suspend or seeks to suspend, I will, oh, I can't second it, but...
Second.
All in favor of suspending the rules to bring forth Counselor Bagley's ADU ordinance sample motion, I'm guessing one, two, and three sample motions?
That's correct.
Purpose of the discussion, certainly support this. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me just jump back to the right page in the document. I'm bringing forward these three amendments, as was mentioned at the work session. You know, they started out as 20 amendments and we were able to whittle them down. I've been following very closely with the land use committee since it started. I was never part of it, never appointed to it, I don't know why. There seems to be some confusion about that in the community. And then, you know, that was an error on my part that I was worried about a quorum because I kind of always include the mayor with written communications in my mind, and there were already three councilors on the land use committee. But that was about six months ago that I discovered that error and I've made my case since then. So I don't think these are last-minute changes. The first motion, I guess I'll make a motion and speak to it, is move to remove all optional aesthetic requirements for attached ADUs as is allowed by the RSA except in the HTC districts. Keep design standards for the HTC districts. And if I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
I think the motion was to suspend the rules to bring forward your amendments just for discussion purposes, and then you can have a vote on them.
Or should we have a motion on the floor?
So he's making a second motion now to talk about the first one, design guidelines. Is that correct? And so we'd have a discussion on this.
Yeah, I'm taking one, two, three, so we'd vote on each separately. And I'll just speak to it briefly. Mr. Cragnell made a great...
Did somebody second it? Counselor Cook seconded.
Mr. Cragnell made an excellent point during the work session, which is these design standards would be very helpful to the HTC committee because they would have a reference card to look at when they were doing the HTC evaluations, which would have to happen with the ADUs. So that's why I think we should keep them for that section. The RSA is rather poorly written. It has the criteria for interior door, which doesn't really serve any purpose, but it's the RSA. New Hampshire's a Dillon's rule state, we have to follow it. It's also poorly written in regards, in my opinion, to the aesthetics because it has to match the existing principal building, not the neighborhood or the street or the area nearby. And we have a lot of houses that have things like asbestos siding, aluminum siding. For whatever reason, maybe they're not the best-looking house. And there's a lot of different ways you could design a bump out that would look better and fit in with the neighborhood better, but because of the way the RSA is written and because of the design standards, our hands are really tied. So I think this gives flexibility to the homeowner to design something that would be good-looking, and I think there's a safety valve built in. With our ADU ordinance, you either have to live in the main unit or the ADU. So this is your home that you're designing. It's not an investment property. So who better than the homeowner to design something that, you know, fits in and looks good? I think the property owner should have rights on what their home looks like and be able to design more or less what they want as long as it complies with our existing codes that we have for safety.
Anything else on that, Counselor Bagley? Counselor Moreau?
Since I did spend a huge portion of my last year working on this, I think we spent a lot of time on the design standards and it had to do with the things that are approved by permitted use. And giving guidelines to the planning director when they're reviewing permitted use is very important so that they are not subjectively proving things, they actually have some guidelines of what to follow. So I think it would be inappropriate for us to take those out at this point without even trying to see how they work because we haven't had permitted uses in ADUs as of yet. So something as of right that's reviewed by a planning director to see if it fits. If we don't give the planning director those guidelines, they don't have something to follow in which to permit a use. So I would be against this change.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to have to follow Counselor Moreau on this. I've been with her, working on this for the last 11 months, every Friday morning. But we've had a lot of input from the public, we've had a lot of input from staff, and I would like to see how this works, as Counselor Moreau said. I know a lot of residents were concerned that there wouldn't be a butter notice if it's just, you know, administrative approval or... But I think the work we've done, I think we need to see how that works. I would not support throwing out all that work at this point.
Counselor Denton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's been six or seven years now since the last round of work sessions on the original ADU ordinance. Overall, I think all of the effort that's gone into redoing it has gotten it to a much better place. And I also think that Counselor Bagley's heart in pursuing these is in a great place. With that said, out of the three proposed changes, the one which I'm most likely to support is the next one on the parking spaces versus this one that's primarily based on Nick Cragnell's input along with Tracy Kozak's input on this.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. I'll answer the vote. I would like to say, just on this topic of, it's somewhat counterintuitive and there was no fear of me being at the meetings because I didn't go to the land use meetings. I tried to watch some of them after. But the idea that we would have design guidelines, at first I thought, well, this is going to be, you know, a lot of work and probably not worth it to have all these design guidelines. Why do we have to have so many rules in Portsmouth was my usual talk track in my head. But speaking with Nick and understanding what it is we're looking to do is we're looking to have an approval by right. And there's not a world in which our Planning and Sustainability Director, Peter Brits, is going to improve something without significant ideas of what it should look like. Because Peter has many jobs, you know, stepping out in front of, you know, entire communities on approving something or not if it's going to be questioned is not one of the positions that I think Peter wants to find himself in. So I think it's our responsibility to approve these if we want more people to have a clear idea of what's required of an ADU, and hopefully then we'll see more ADUs happen. And I know it seems counterintuitive by having more design guidelines upfront, but I'm hopeful that with those design guidelines, we're going to get more than 15 or so ADUs in a seven-year period. And the idea that the RSA, you know, it speaks to that and we could just take the RSA, you know, at its word and still call it a right, well, that would only apply to, you know, interior ADUs and not detached, or attached ADUs and not detached ADUs. So we have to make some changes there. So I will not be supporting this amendment, but for all of the reasons I think that Counselor Bagley wants to support this amendment. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I share Counselor Bagley's concerns around putting in place new design guidelines. However, I'm willing to go along with design guidelines in this case if we see that it actually does improve the process and allows for faster approval by right. That said, the reason I have this concern is that if you watch our land use committees and the approval process, it can take a very long time to get through the approval process, especially at the HTC because of concerns around design. And the last thing I want is to put in place changes to an ordinance that make it even more difficult to get through this process. So my caution would be, I would support these guidelines with the caveat that they do improve the speed with which we approve more ADUs, but if we don't, the council needs to revisit this within a year's time if we don't see a faster approval process. So that would be my request to the council.
Your Honor? I think we all want to streamline the process of getting an ADU. We know it can help with housing. We know it can help with multi-generations living in the same piece of property, as Tracy described. I think what we have to remember is what comes with the design criteria is what the planning department wants to do is actually create a handbook that makes it very clear, this is how you apply for an ADU, this is where you put it on the lot, and these are the design criteria so that it's simpler to follow the directions and get a smooth approval. And so I was resistant to all of the aesthetic criteria at first. I also talked to our senior planner and others who explained, oh, no, you have to remember that this goes into a handbook of how to do it and makes it simple. And that's where we want to get to.
Counselor Lombardi?
Yeah, I would echo Counselor Taber's comments as well, but I also want to say that the history of architecture in Portsmouth is incredibly important, and that's why we have the historic district. The historic district is limited, and I think that the areas, there are areas of Portsmouth that are not in the historic district that are probably just as important. That being said, I would, you know, I would never, at this point anyway, suggest expanding the historic district. I know better than that. However, to have some general guidelines that seemingly will, you know, streamline the process of getting an ADU approved seems very good. It gives people a good concept of what they have to do. If they have no guidelines for it, then they're just making it up. And that process has to take longer than if they have some guidelines. So I think it will help streamline the process. If it doesn't, we can always revisit.
Thank you, Counselor Lombardi. If no more debate, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your Honor?
Oh, sorry.
I'm pretty sure I'm going to be voting in favor and everyone else is going to vote opposed.
Oh, yeah.
Just clarified.
Voting for his motion, correct, Your Honor?
We're voting for my motion.
Correct.
To amend.
Everyone just spoke against.
Yeah.
To amend.
Yes, to amend. Okay, so we'll do, this is to speak on behalf of the Counselor Bagley's First Amendment. So...
Which would be to remove...
We'll just do a roll call vote, yes or no?
Yes.
Kelly?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Counselor Taber?
No.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Moreau?
No.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
No.
Counsel Blaylock?
No.
Counsel Cook?
No.
Mayor McCaffrey?
No.
Motion fails with one in favor and eight opposed.
And I'll move on to my second motion, Your Honor, at your pleasure. Move to remove any parking requirements for ADUs as this will trigger the three parking space required rule, decrease permeable land, and increase the city's signature, heat signature for relatively small increase in housing, as replace green space with parking in our residential neighborhoods. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
This is kind of a long way to say that if you require one space for an ADU and there's a house that wants to put in an ADU and they don't have a driveway or the driveway's not up to code, you now have to bring that driveway up to code and you need to have two parking spaces for the existing house plus the new parking space for the ADU. So because Portsmouth is such an old city and every piece of property is unique, we're going to run into a lot of situations where the one-space requirement is actually going to become a three-space requirement. And I think that's going to, you know, slow down the number of people that want to build an ADU. And then it also has a negative effect. If they don't need the three spaces, but they do have the land to build it, they're now replacing their garden and their lawn with the driveway, which I don't think is really to the benefit of anyone. But this motion, it really boils down to one thing. We all ran on affordable housing. We all recognize there's a housing crisis here in the council. This is just a simple question. Do you value housing higher or lower than you value on-street free parking? So that's what it boils down to. I value housing higher than I value free-on-street parking. I understand that's a very controversial take, but I think that's where communities across the US and the world are headed, where car is no longer king and livable, walkable communities are a priority, and we need affordable housing.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. The Assistant Mayor and Counselor Denton and Counselor Moreau.
Well, Counselor Bagley, as someone who's, again, like Counselor Moreau and Counselor Blaylock, who have sat on the land use committee and watched the discussions at the planning board about this, I understand your sentiment and I agree with you. The problem I have is that the, I also ran on compromise, and I think that a lot of these changes that you were trying to make, including this one, I feel you're neglecting the fact that they're in here as compromises. Compromises when we were discussing this at land use with residents, with the butters, with people who I'd submitted, with people like Tracy who sat in some of the forums that we had, with the planning board, and what the work that Counselor Moreau did there to get to where we are. So while I, again, respect and understand your sentiment, I think that what is sitting poorly with me and other people is that the amendments that are in here and the changes that have been made were made through a series of compromises. And so by bringing these amendments, it can be seen and felt as that you are dismissing all of that hard work that got us to this point. So we had a lot of these conversations. They were hard conversations. We made a lot of compromises when we first went into land use. We talked about, you know, standard designs that people would be automatically approved on. We talked about parking regulations. We talked about neighborhood of butters. We talked about a lot of these things. And so that's why I just can't support this motion or any of these other motions because we did compromise to get where we are.
I saw Counselor Denton and then Counselor Moreau and then Counselor Taber.
Thank you, Your Honor. Like I had mentioned, I am going to be supporting this. I do totally understand that there are conditional use permit which property owners can apply for, and likewise, I understand the sentiment which was spoken to, that many of these ADUs will simply go to family members because it's cost prohibitive to build one. However, and again, Tracy, I'm sorry for mentioning you again, like you stated, that wasn't the original intent of your ADU. It was to help Visa card holders, and generally, that requires lower rents. And it sounds kind of silly saying it, but not having parking spaces leads to having lower rents. And like most people know, in the past eight years, I've been the only renter on the council that doesn't also own property. I live in a 550-foot studio. For the past four years, I've ridden my bicycle to and from work, and it is a lifestyle choice, but it's also less expensive than having a parking spot in the lease.
Thank you, Counselor Denton. Counselor Moreau?
Where I do agree that taking, valuing people over cars is the direction to go. We made a lot of compromises at land use, as the Assistant Mayor has talked about. I also sat through all the planning board meetings, as the city council rep there, and we made an additional compromise to actually put in a waiver of parking requirements. You just have to go before the planning board and get a conditional use permit. So we put in the parking requirements, but if they're willing to plead their case to the planning board, they have a chance of actually waiving that requirement. And I felt like both of those compromises really worked to the heart of concerns regarding the parking. So for that, I will not be supporting the motion.
Counselor Taber?
Thanks, Your Honor. I look at the whole process...
I look at the whole process developing this as we want to sort of open the faucet so that we get more ADUs. And we're opening it halfway with this. And I think if we opened it all the way with doing things like removing the parking requirement, we would start to get pushback. And the reason I say that is I go back to the presentation that we had from our intern Lucas on the Butters to the existing ADUs. Real people with real concerns and their number-one issue was parking. We may philosophically not agree with that, but it's there. It's real. It's a valid concern of the people in this community. So I think if we opened the faucet all the way, we would probably create more consternation than we intend to. We, the two big wins in this are the parking is reduced to one space and the ADU lot requirements are greatly relieved. And those two big wins are get us halfway. So I think that's where we ought to go.
Counselor Taber. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first thing I want to say is that I truly appreciate the amount of work that the Land Use Committee has put in. I watched every single one of your meetings. I also watched all of the Planning Board meetings. So I'm very well aware of just all the work that was done, all the comment that was taken. In fact, I spent quite a bit of time today tallying all the public comment that was made at those meetings and also looking at the original report on which all of the work was based, because I want to make sure that we're making sound decisions as a council. The original ADU report that came out from the Planning Department concerned me. And the reason it concerned me is it involved input from only three neighborhood representatives when the Land Use Committee was conducting interviews. It also involved input then from architects, engineers, and ADU applicants. So a total of 16 unique individuals. Of those three individuals that contributed on behalf of neighborhoods, one doesn't even live in Portsmouth but was representing a neighborhood. Then when that came to the Land Use Committee, we heard from additional nine unique individuals. Okay, so three individuals that are quoted in the report, nine additional individuals at the Land Use Committee over the course of several months. Plus, we also heard from two of the individuals of those first three that were in the ADU report. And those two individuals also spoke at planning as well. When we went to planning, we heard from another four unique individuals, which means we heard from a total of 16 different individuals about planning. So about this process, when we talk about a robust public input process, we're talking about 16 unique individuals and additional 13 architects, engineers, and ADU applicants. So that's a total of 29. So we've heard from 29 individuals in the course of a year and a half. Why do I raise this? Because two of those individuals, one of them we heard from 13 times. And that individual actually spent 30 minutes in one Land Use Committee sharing a view. Another one, who's not a resident of Portsmouth, is a landlord. We heard from nine times in Land Use and planning and also had a 30-minute session of question and answer alone with the Land Use Committee. I just want to be really clear that I respect all the work and time the Land Use Committee has put in and the three sessions the Planning Board then additionally put in to discuss ADUs, but we're not getting a robust input from the public. We're only hearing from a small segment of the public, and we're hearing from a few individuals repeatedly, again and again, on what their views are with regard to ADUs. That is by no means representative of the community. And so that's why I struggle when I come here to council and I'm asked to approve something that we've had a robust public input process, and I'm looking at the number of individuals who've actually contributed, I'm thinking, there are a lot of people in this community that are not represented in these design guidelines and are not represented in the decision we're making around ADUs, especially when it comes to things like requiring parking spots for ADUs. And the reason I raise that is that that parking requirement disadvantages certain neighborhoods over other neighborhoods when it comes to ADU approvals. Some neighborhoods have more space for additional parking. Others do not. I live in one of those neighborhoods that does not have additional space to put an extra parking space. I have two neighbors that have houses that don't have a single parking spot, single-family homes without parking at all. And so if you live in my neighborhood, for example, you automatically are going to have to go apply for a conditional use permit to build an ADU, even if it's internal to your house. Even if you're not building anything outside of your house, you're just making it from part of your home, you're going to have to go to get a conditional use permit because suddenly you're going to trigger parking requirements. And that, to me, discourages ADU, building ADUs, especially, it's interesting in a neighborhood that my neighborhood has multifamily zoning, has ADUs that are pre-existing. I have a neighbor behind me with five apartments. I have a neighbor that's a buddy me on the side that's three condominiums. I also have single-family homes with no parking around me, and yet, no one today could get approval for an ADU without requesting a conditional use permit in my neighborhood. So my neighborhood's automatically disadvantaged by putting this in, whereas other neighborhoods would not be. And some neighborhoods have ample street parking, so what you're doing is you're asking us to pave over a part of somebody's lawn when there's ample street parking, and there's no reason to add another parking spot just because you have an ADU. So I think that this particular guideline is a real problem for me because I don't think it can be fairly applied across the city.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Counselor Cook brings up some excellent points, in particular to the Neighborhood Committee. As mentioned, out of the three members, one doesn't live in Portsmouth but is a landlord here, which I don't know if that's the input we really should be looking for when we're trying to solve the affordable housing crisis. And the second member of the three actually had an active lawsuit against the City of Portsmouth Planning Board regarding ADU being built by their neighbor. Why that lawsuit was ongoing, that member's husband was appointed to the Planning Board. The lawsuit, they lost. The ADU was approved by criteria that were allowed. But during all this discussion, I don't recall anybody ever disclosing the lawsuit against the City of Portsmouth Planning Board. And I just, it really just boils down to one thing. Do you value parking more or less than you value housing?
So Counselor Bagley, you've stated that twice now, and it's sometimes difficult on the council level because, you know, statements and kind of ideological phrases that people can make maybe national level and the state level, they're tougher for us to make because we have to actually make the sausage. We have to figure that out. And the point you raise on parking is a good one. I think it's worth considering. I think it's worth considering potentially from PTS where we could self-parking, because I agree with you, parking is a huge limiting factor in affordability. And whether it's parking for ADUs, whether it's parking for multifamily homes, whether it's parking for a commercial, parking is a big deal. And yet, we don't have a citywide parking program. We've tried with a pilot. It's failed. But if we could actually have a parking program in the City of Portsmouth that said this house had two spots associated with it, this house wants to build it, they don't want a parking spot, but they only get one tag, we might be able to move further down the road when it comes to parking. But I don't think this is the place to have the argument around parking when we're trying to make it easier to solve one portion of an affordable housing crisis. I don't think anybody in this room is under the illusion that ADUs are going to solve housing. What I think they are is a tool for some members of our community to keep either live-in-place, to rent out, to J1s. It's a tool in the toolkit that we are expanding, and all the neighborhoods that have been stated as having harder parking requirements did not qualify because of area lots and setbacks before. So it's kind of a double-edged sword where we're increasing the opportunity there, but we're also then saying you got to get a CUP if you want to forego the parking requirements. But I hope that we can come to consensus because I do appreciate everything that the Land Use Board has done to drastically expand the amount of people that can have an ADU in their backyard and also provide places and a process, and by right, and also provide a process that currently does not exist for those that could not by right have one, go through a CUP process to allow one waiving the parking requirement. If, as, you know, Counselor Cook mentioned, plenty of on-street parking, then we could prove that to the Planning Board and get it approved. But the goal before us tonight is to make it clear for people that want to build ADUs to have the tools that they need to do that and build them faster without tackling the other issues that I do think, you know, I would love to have back in front of us, a citywide parking, you know, ordinance that would really bite into affordable housing. But so far, we haven't had that. So, you know, I would ask that we have the vote and have a roll call vote, but to continue this parking discussion at a later date. So roll call. Kelly?
Yep. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Counselor Taber?
No.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moreau?
No.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
No.
Counsel Blaylock?
No.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McCackran?
No.
Motion fails on a vote of six to three. Three in favor, six opposed.
And, Your Honor, I will make my last motion, which is move to increase the ADU size to a maximum of 850 square feet. And if I get a second, I'll speak briefly to this.
Okay, so before we do that, we're gonna, I said nine o'clock, and it's past nine o'clock, so we're gonna just take a five-minute recess to thank our student participants. Maybe a 10-minute recess because we got to move some chairs, and we will send you on your way. Thank you again for being a part of your government, cares about you. So thank you, guys. (end of transcript)[173.62]
But I think the work that's gone into, I'd like to see what that results is. Council Moro said.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
No.
Counselor Taber?
No.
Counselor Jettin?
No.
Counselor Moro?
No.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counselor Lombardi?
No.
Counselor Blaylaw?
No.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Mayor McKeckren?
No.
Motion fails. One in favor and eight opposed.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Now we're back to the motion on the floor to approve as amended by legal and to schedule a public hearing for May 1st. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Thank you for the work on that and May 1st for the second reading and public hearing. So, next up, we have the... Yeah, it's tough to tell. City manager, Connors, city manager items and two car action.
Good evening, everyone. The one item under this heading tonight will speak to allowing or asking the council to consider allowing for electronic billing with the approval of this body per New Hampshire RSA 76:11. This is in response to the city's goal of sustainability, citizens' convenience, and reducing costs. And tonight, the Finance Department headed up by Judy Belanger is going to provide a very brief presentation to speak to this matter. And thanks for being here, Judy.
Great. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As the city manager is bringing the presentation up, I'd just like to start and say that I'm very excited to present this long overdue paperless bill option for our property tax bills and for water sewer invoices. This has been an initiative of the Finance Department for several years now, but we've had to do some upgrading to software and implement our new billing process for water and sewer as well. So, we're now kind of ready to move forward with this. I'd like to recognize both Nancy Bates, our tax collector and revenue administrator, who is here tonight, if there's any additional questions, and also Judy Winough, our controller and enterprise accountant for and oversees our water sewer billing. So, they both have been very instrumental in making this happen. So, what are the benefits? Really simply, reduced mailing costs, which I'll talk more about that later in the presentation. Customer convenience, we daily get requests of when we're going to go paperless. Speed of delivery, this is instantaneous through your email instead of waiting for mail service. And sustainability, which follows the city council goals of proactively pursuing and integrating the sustainability. So, if we had to take these four items and rank them by priority, they all really become number one in priority. I think they all meet that match. So, why are we here tonight? So, obviously, going paperless isn't new to us. A lot of us take advantage of this paperless billing, you know, through our credit card statements, our mortgage statements, banking, other utility bills, et cetera. So, we're all familiar with paperless billing. But there is a state statute, the RSA 7611, that provides for electronic billing delivery with approval of the governing body. And this is really specific to tax bills. This really isn't specific to water and sewer or to any of the other invoices. The Air City Clerk, Kelly Barnaby, also already does paperless for our dog licenses. But this is very specific to property taxes. But since we're going to be putting both water and sewer, it's kind of making that announcement that, you know, individuals will be able to take advantage of this as well. So, the RSA has a specific language in here. It says, "The tax collector, within 30 days after the receipt of such list," which is the tax warrant, "would send to every person taxed a bill for such taxes by first-class mail or with the approval of the governing body by electronic means." So, that is why we are here tonight, seeking your approval as the governing body. It also indicates that the collector may issue bills or notices by electronic means only after the taxpayer requests such delivery. So, this is completely voluntary. So, from here on in, I'm going to use the term "customer," which will mean both a taxpayer and a customer for water and sewer, because sometimes they're not the same. But for the presentation, we'll just use the word "customer" here. So, how will this work? So, we utilize Invoice Cloud, which is the current billing, presentment, and online payment vendor. And so, our customers would enroll in this program through the Invoice Cloud portal. Now, many customers are already members of this, set up their accounts through the Invoice Cloud portal, because many of them pay their bills through Invoice Cloud. But you can also register as new or if you currently have an account, once we push the button to move forward with it, there'll be an option to go paperless. Customers must agree to the terms and conditions that are outlined by Invoice Cloud and the responsibility of the customers to maintain a valid email address. So, it's real important that if they change their email address, that they have to, you know, go back in and update that. There is a provision that says that failure to receive notice does not alter the obligation to make the payment on time. So, if they miss their email or, you know, it goes into junk, it's into your junk box, it will still, still a customer's responsibility to pay that bill. And then, very important, the customer can opt in or opt out at any time. So, to reduce the mailing cost breakdown, so we have our tax bill. We send out about 18,000 bills, because we send out a tax bill and then a renewal, the notice for the second payment of the taxes. So, that's 18,000 mailings per year there. And for tax bills, it's $1.19 right now to mail one of these bills. And that would include the paper, the envelopes, et cetera, the return envelope that we also provide, and the mail service for stuffing the envelope. So, the 18,000 bills cost us about $21,420 per year. By utilizing paperless, it will be charged 30 cents per each one of these mailings. So, a total of $5,400. So, we're expecting or anticipating a 35% enrollment. You know, hopefully, you know, it will become much larger in the future, but we can save an estimate of 89 cents per bill for our tax bills or $5,600 with that 35% enrollment. Now, with water sewer bills, a little bit less expensive per bill, but our volume is so much bigger. So, we send out about 102,000 bills per year at 88 cents. So, it's close to $90,000 per year we're paying for preparing and postageing of the bills. And if we had, again, it would still be 30 cents that we would pay per bill. With that 35% enrollment, the city could save an estimate 58 cents per bill or $20,700 for the year for that 35% enrollment. So, together, we're looking at about $26,000 savings per year. And again, over time, we're really hoping we see a much higher percentage of enrollment. So, the Invoice Cloud, which we, like I mentioned, many customers already have an account, but this is just, it's hard to read, but as you log in and you log into your account or you want to establish a new account, they kind of walk you through the whole process and what you need to do to agree to their terms and conditions and so forth. So, you can, you can select it there. You can also, if you select it and you decide you want to change your mind, you can unselect it at a later date. And how are we going to get this information out, providing that the council goes with this paperless billing option? We're going to do an insert on the upcoming mailing that will be going out later this month for the second half tax bill. Let's do June 1st. So, this, this will be inside the envelope with this, and it's pretty eye-catching, and it just kind of walks customers through the idea that, hey, we're going paperless. And there's also the QR square that they can utilize. There's the email address, the website address, and a phone number in case somebody, you know, needs some additional help to get signed on. Additional advertising and resources would be the messaging itself on the Invoice Cloud portal, the city's newsletter and press release, and there's frequently asked questions on the website that we're going to be putting on there. And then, we'll also have signage for the Tax Office counter and the Water Sewer Billing Counter. And then, just quickly to recap, invoices and notices will be delivered electronically. Again, voluntarily, voluntary enrollment, so customers can opt in or opt out at any time. There's significant cost savings associated with this, and our sustainability efforts. One thing that we're looking at in the future is our motor vehicle renewal notices that we do send out as a courtesy at this point, where we send about 1,200 to 1,500 renewal notices every month. And this could be a significant saving. So, we want to get this rolled out first and then try and look. It's a different software. It's not Invoice Cloud, so we just want to make sure that we can utilize that as well. So, we are seeking our city council to vote and to allow us to move forward with this option if they so choose.
Thank you, Judy. Any questions? Counselor Moro?
Being a person who actually goes into the system and looks up tax bills pretty regularly for my job, will people still have access to tax bills to look up for certain properties?
The tax bills themselves? I think it's just the tax.
Yes, that will change.
That will change. Okay.
Counselor Bagley and Counselor Cook?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to Judy and the Finance Department. This is an easy vote. It's better for the environment. It's saving everybody money, and it's opt-in. So, if you don't want to do it, you don't have to. And I will note that I didn't realize that I didn't, that I could register Emma online every year, my dog, so I will sign up for that when I get home.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a great initiative. I have one question. I have sat on a few committees where we needed to get public information out to the, to the general public who doesn't necessarily read the newsletter. And one of the avenues we always had was to put something in the sewer water bill as a mailer, a special mailer. How will that be done in the future for those who have opted in for?
Yeah, so if someone has opted in for paperless, they will still be able to get our inserts. Yeah, they will still be able to do that.
Counselor Burden?
I have a question. People who have an automatic deduction for water and sewer, that will change?
That will not change if they opt in for the automatic payment, but they still get a paper bill in the mail, and then it's automatically withdrawn. So, this will, they'll just have to add that paperless aspect to it. And, you know, so they won't get an invoice in the mail as well.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and Nancy.
Is there a motion?
And Judy.
There is no motion?
Oh.
There is no motion.
Well, I'd wait a motion to approve the optional paperless billing. It should have, according to New Hampshire RSA 76:11.
Your Honor, I would move that we authorize the city manager and staff to initiate paperless billing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. I'd wait a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We have a presentation from Monte Bohannon on communications, community engagement, and I've been told it's seven minutes, so I will-
It is now.
Start my timer.
Six and a half, Monte, there you are.
Run, Monte. His first presentation.
Give me one second.
I promise to talk like an auctioneer. Honorable mayor and city councilors, city staff, how are you? Thank you. I heard from Counselor Taber that we wanted a report back, so I'm going to do this quickly as a highlight reel for a larger report back to come, but there are a number of opportunities that are timely that I wanted to bring to you, so we can go ahead and roll on. So, two of the council goals relate to my role here, and it's really about trying to gain an understanding of how all of our different audiences get their information and making sure that everyone who lives and works here feels that it is their city. And if we take to the next slide, I'm coming to you today as part of the communications team made up of Stephanie Seacord, our Public Information Officer, and me, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. And I also am working closely with the CIO, Pat Ainsworth, and across departments, really, to do these three things, have a two-way dialogue. We send out a lot of information, and we like to hear back about information. We also are working across departments to improve communications, branding, and streamline those workflows. And really, the most important piece that I want to talk about tonight is that community engagement. So, how are we engaging in that public process? So, a number of updates that we've already undertaken. I've developed a draft communications plan along with Stephanie to engage boards, committees, and commissions based on some of the groundwork laid by the Portsmouth Energy Advisory Committee and others, as well as my own background. The Cultural Plan Subcommittee will be the first to use this framework and to provide feedback, which will continue to help us iterate and center community engagement. And so, we have a starting point to do more of what works. And thanks to the good work of Counselor Cook. For the Governance Committee, who inventoried and categorized all the boards, committees, and commissions, I'm going to start, use that to improve accessibility by laying out information there, making it easier to navigate, ensuring everyone can find the information that they're seeking, and it's all in the right place. I also plan to work with our CIO and the web team to address some usability issues from navigation and layout of the website, and site search and meeting archive calendar are also top on the wish list. And beyond that, we've started to see some changes in our social media. I took, I'm taking an inventory and audit of what we're doing and how we're using all of those channels, and we're already seeing some adjustments. I added the City of Portsmouth Instagram account and to add a little bit more color, so it's not all just press release and information going out. There's a little bit about why our city is great and all the things that you can do here. And so, talk a little bit about recent surveys. Typically, these have been sort of survey monkey style surveys. They're mostly informational. They are not necessarily scientific. And the city uses these to gauge interest, solicit feedback, and get a sense of how people feel about a certain topic. And it's one data set among many others to help, that goes towards helping make an informed decision. Of note, in this list, the Americans for the Arts Survey is a scientific survey that was conducted with the help of the city but by a lot of volunteers for our arts and culture, and is of great use to them. And a partnership between the EDC and the Chamber surveyed businesses, retail businesses, about providing information and events around on-the-shoulder seasons to try and generate some interest in those retails. You know, and it's things like the Recreation Department makes some changes to their basketball program, and then they survey those that participated in it to see how those changes were well received. But what we really want to talk about and has come up recently is Flashvote and sort of the how and why of Flashvote. You sign up for Flashvote using your email address or your physical address, sorry, and a login. It's going to ask you some demographic questions, and what they will do for us is balance out a survey pool to get some statistically valid results. We'll work with them to design surveys. Once that survey is sent out, we'll get those results back in 48 hours, and everybody who took that survey will also have those results. That signup process is ongoing. And the, it is a requirement that folks live in the city to participate, and only one vote is allowed per person. Those votes are anonymous. We can only see screen names, which are editable, so that you can have either your name or a screen name of your choosing. The first vote is coming soon, and we've got some interesting data coming back. This is the initial survey that everybody takes when they first sign up, and you'll notice a weighted average there of what people are interested in talking about. So, the why of this really is about making sure that everybody can be heard, because some people cannot afford the time to come to public comment, or they don't feel comfortable speaking in front of a large audience in a public forum. This allows another channel for the city to hear from its residents and what they think on a myriad of topics. It goes back to that second goal. It'll be part of the fabric of that feedback and input alongside public comment, emails, letters, and in-person interactions with a few key differences. And we'll see the next slide. Much like those informal surveys, the data will be, set will be used among many to inform decisions. But like the informal ones, these are scientific and statistically relevant, meaning the data are more reliable and indicative of the entire community sentiment on a given topic. And once we get enough signups, we're at about 250, and they're saying, but we need a minimum of 400, better to have more. We can send out our first survey, and these are some of the topics that we're considering. And this is why I wanted to bring this in front of you today, because some of these projects and initiatives are launching or have launched. And so, it would be great to get this out in front of those folks. And part of my role is to help facilitate these community engagement processes for the staff in departments or volunteers on committees. Marketing may not be their thing, or they don't have the time, and consultants, while vital, may not know Portsmouth and what works here and who those important stakeholders are. And I can help bridge that gap. A number of those things, we've got the Climate Action Plan kickoff on May 4th. Community policing facility, there'll be opportunity to learn and discuss plans there. The Cultural Plan RFP is out, and it includes robust community engagement components. I really also want to know when that skate festival is happening, because I want to, I want to be at that. But the big thing, as we saw in the previous Word Cloud slide, the number one topic that people want to talk about is housing. I thought it was very interesting that a couple of days ago, I got an email from my alma mater, UNH, talking about how housing, affordable housing is a national crisis. So, it's not just here, but we have a real opportunity to do something about it in our community. And how we choose to tackle that and how we choose to engage the public is a really important component of that. And I think that in working with Planning and Sustainability Department, including the Housing Navigator, the Portsmouth Housing Authority, and the City Manager, to produce a plan for community engagement around housing, and I know the PHA has a, will be coming before the city council soon with an update, so I look forward to working on that. And I will leave with you with a works in progress that I'm already working on. This, by the way, is my 50th day working for the city, and I'm really happy to be here. And, but there is a ton of opportunities in this short list of things that we are looking at, whether it's the Consider.it, which is kind of like the digital equivalent of the dotocracy of voting with, voting with sticky dots, to thinking about how we're utilizing all of our social media. And I will hopefully have a full report back on community engagement soon. They'll have a baseline of data and a plan for what and how to measure performance from year to year and our next steps in FY '24. Thank you.
Thank you, Monte.
Thank you, Monte.
Any questions in the council? Appreciate it, Monte. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thanks, Monte.
Next up, I'd wait a sample motion to accept the email correspondence and place on file.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. Onto the council's agenda. First, under my name is the McIntyre. We're going to start with a special, another public comment. If you, how many people want to speak that didn't sign up on this sheet here? Just one? Okay. We'll just have you after.
Two, I see, a second.
Oh.
And one online.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll have that opportunity. Again, what is, before us is the disposition, meaning if we're going to identify funds to make an offer for acquisition through the negotiated sale, which is a fair market value price for the McIntyre, or if we're going to advise the GSA will not be proceeding with a negotiated sale. I'd welcome any and all speakers to, to the podium and do our best to answer questions when everybody is through. We will start with Richard. The topic of McIntyre.
Good evening, everybody.
Counselor Richard.
My name's Richard Smith. Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for having a public session. I'm going to ask you to please stop the spending on the McIntyre. I don't know how many years it's been, but I think the only people that have made any money from this is the developers and the lawyers. The city hasn't, we haven't made anything. We've just spent, spent, spent. And the future doesn't look any different. So, I don't think there's like, it doesn't look good if we keep going this way. There's just so much money that's been spent that could have been better used to so many people in need. So, why don't we please, please don't vote to go any further with this. Let's get out of this when we can. Thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Richard. Next up is Page Trace.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Page Trace, 27 Hancock Street. There we go. "Mr. Mayor, you asked to buy or not buy. I'm afraid I can't give you an answer this evening. You and your council have provided no information, no price, no path forward with the GSA, no plan afterwards, not even a plan to negotiate your way out of a lawsuit using the McIntyre. I'm sure somebody's thought of it, just simply no plan. Now, when it's too late except to spend more of the residents' money, you suddenly ask us what we think. How interesting. Does last-minute civic engagement really absolve you all? Will your public involvement really dissipate the resulting aromas of a hasty, non-public agenda? If we buy, would we build? With due respect, I bet Mr. Kane has some thoughts about that. Has the city moved on from community plan to option one or option two, both of which you never unveiled? What else were you planning to surprise us with, sir? The developer's possible involvement in the November 2nd, 2021 election? His attorneys state he would have that constitutional right in their suit against the city. Moving forward, I'm sure there are plenty of high-quality, high-qualified developers who would like the chance to develop the McIntyre. If you were ever forthcoming, I might say you asked that you go that route. Right now, I can't. For a year and a half, you've shared nothing of importance until it's obsolete and very dead. Maybe this is what comes from farming out elected responsibilities. With respect, you all now own two huge lawsuits and have lost $2.5 million. I think I might- I think I might speak for many should you purchase. There is absolutely no appetite to have the McIntyre used as a tool to negotiate a settlement, nor for some, the color turquoise. Me, you'll get no response. You lost my trust February 10th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Next up is Petra Huda.
Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I intended to start with a statement that this property was taken away from us, from the people of Portsmouth, by the federal government. It's time to take it back. But according to an article in the Portsmouth Pulse, we already, may already own it. This article was in there and published and shared with all of you by a former deputy city manager, Ted Jankowski. So, question is, like Counselor Trace, former Counselor Trace said, do we have all the information? First, we heard 12 man, now we're hearing 20. Which one's right? Have you started the process to proceed to do this? You still haven't given us any more information. And before the city commits on anything, personally, I'd like to understand the appraisal process. Was it done by them? Was it done by us? Do we have to pay for it? How do they get the number? And if we do negotiate a price on here, are we going to hire somebody who does this kind of stuff, purchasing of commercial property? So we start at a number and we take out, for example, the asbestos that's in there that we have to remediate, or any other, anything else that we have to get it ready for market, or whatever we're going to do with it for? So, as you can tell, I am for bringing this back to the people of Portsmouth. We cannot change what's occurred in the last three city councils. But the position of the residents and the participants in the design of the community plan were pretty clear on what they wanted, the open space, the retail shops, and the outdoor pavilion, and, oh yeah, green space. They did not want, and it was very clear, more hotels, condos, luxury apartments. And should this, something for you to think about, should this go to a public sale and be bought by a developer? Do you really think the land use boards are going to hold back on a developer not putting hotels and condos and more luxury apartments in, from your experience based on this? The next thing I want to talk to you about is, first, we were told on the April 22 settlement agreement that we were going to put the prior lawsuit behind us. In reading the new lawsuit, it looks like they're dragging up all the old dirt again. So my question to you is, on that note, I note, the last payment to Mr. Kane of the $2 million that we so-called owe him is due on July 15th, 2023. Since now he is suing us again, I urge you to withhold that until something is settled. So in spite of doing all the finger pointing and all the naysayers who say we keep on spending all this money, I would also like to point out to you what a great job the city has done on some other projects, some really big, like the wastewater treatment plant out at Parris Island, some smaller, like the senior center. We can do this without a developer. We put out an RFP, just like we did for everything else. So in closing, for me, I think it's time to take back what was taken away from the people of Portsmouth and buy this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next up is Esther Kennedy.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. I'm kind of sad that we're having this conversation at 10 o'clock at night. There were people here that wanted to speak and just couldn't handle it and had to leave. I agree with much of what was said. We don't really have the information, and maybe Monty, with all his great plans, will help us be able to get more information out to the citizens on particular projects like this. But we have been successful in the past in buying the buildings. I was on the council that bought the Dobell Center, and that went really well. I also think that this was taken from the people, and it needs to come back to the city so that we can make the right decisions for the city. When you go down on that street, which I had an opportunity this weekend just to kind of take a look, and you look at the skyline and you look at the buildings down there, this is really in the heart of our city. And, you know, we throw out a lot of different things. We throw out the fact that it could be a police station or some kind of downtown police enforcement. I know we make quite a bit of money off the parking already. It could be moving City Hall down while we renovate this place for maybe some 55 and older housing, knowing the population of our city. There's a lot of potential, a lot of ways that this could go. But I think the city needs control over that. I think the city needs to take it on and really make a conscious decision on how, what way we go. And maybe you do end up selling parts of it, often three years after the agreement is up. But I think that gives you folks the power to make the right decision, and I really would encourage you to do that. I would, given an estimate, I have not done it myself, but if we bought it for the $20 million that supposedly has been thrown out, again, we don't have the information, so we really can't make an executive decision, we're looking at 20 cents on our tax card per year when you look at that kind of money. That's not a lot of money for making sure our downtown is appropriate. I had the privilege of sitting at the Frank Jones Center with many people and talking about the McIntyre. And I heard people wanted open space. It was round tables. We spent hours together and having a conversation about what should happen. People wanted civic space. People wanted community space. No one wanted hotels. No one wanted it to be done by a developer where they make all the money. So I know how much we are making off there for parking now. I think there's a lot of potential for the city to take it back, make sure we do it right. And then again, maybe we do lease it out for an unspecified amount of years, but at least you will have that control. No one else will have that control. And I think it's really important for our city to have that. So I ask, I'm very limited in information. I would love to have more information, but I'm going to ask that you buy it at 10 o'clock at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, Susan Denenberg.
Good evening, or maybe good evening late. I'm Susan Denenberg, 44 Wybert Street. I would urge you not even to be thinking about this tonight. I don't even think this discussion should be going here. I don't know why we're even talking about buying the McIntyre building. I mean, it was offered to us for a dollar, and now we're talking about $20 million. I'm concerned that this council has overspent, other councils have overspent. We spent $10 million buying the community campus without having an idea what we would do with that space, or even if you could develop it with wetlands and so forth. I'm concerned that we've overspent by $2 million plus for the McIntyre building, and now you're throwing out the idea that maybe we'll just spend another $20 million here. I'm concerned that we're not thinking through things here, thinking about buying some building. We don't know what the purpose is. We're not developers. The city has different goals than developers have. I've been concerned, and I've said this before, that the city, I think, has developer envy. We don't need developer envy. They're going to do their thing. Hopefully, there's enough controls over what they do with our zoning and so forth. But we don't need to buy a building here without having any clue what we would use it for. And I am suggesting that we've overspent any number of times. We've overspent when the council voted to spend more money to buy the land for the Foundry Garage by $2 million. Let's not do that again. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other speakers?
Greg Mahanna. This morning, I also read an article in Portsmouth.
Greg, just state Portsmouth.
Greg Mahanna, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Thank you. This morning, I also read an article on the portsmouthpulse.com. This cited direct and recent quotes from former deputy city manager Ted Jankowski. I don't know Ted. This article outlined the contents of Senate Bill 1589, sponsored by Senator Judd Gregg and passed in either '03 or '04. As recently as 2020, Mr. Jankowski met with GSA officials in Washington, DC for the specific purpose of affirming that Bill 1589 approved the transfer of the McIntyre to Portsmouth. He concluded it did, and this bill has never been repealed. I did find possible outs for the GSA, noting that the McIntyre tenants were supposed to move to an unbuilt building at Pease. This lot was purchased for this building by the GSA in 2004 for $3.9 million. So they already had the site, but they decided not to build the building because, coincidentally, that building was going to cost $20 million bucks, and it would have raised the rent for the FBI and all those other people, so they didn't build it. But in closing, it seems that there may still be a bit of leverage for Portsmouth. As we consider our options for McIntyre, please carefully review this 20-year-old information, its possibilities, and at least send a professional to Washington, DC to talk to somebody that may know about this. I mean, the bill has not been repealed, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Any other?
I have two hands on them.
Good evening. Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street. Thanks for this opportunity. I did a lot of research, as you know, and I do not believe that's actually a viable option. They took the legislation off the books after '08. There was a bad recession. That's my take on it. Whatever we do moving forward, I hope we take the time. This is an opportunity to reset the button. I believe that this was abducted from us. I believe the process was not flawed. I think it was perfectly done for a long time. You inherited a tough, a tough hand. But now we can reset it. And if this is an authentic, sincere effort to get it right, this is not substantial enough a start. I've been calling for a while mayor, a forum. That means dialogue, give and take. This is too compartmentalized. A good start. But this project is once-in-a-lifetime. Some of you have children. I would ask you to consider how you're going to answer to them when they said, "Mom, Dad, what did you do? We had that opportunity." Because we could really go from the frying pan to the fire on this one. If you look at the CD4, CD5 zoning, that's what the city threw out the first night, January 20th to 16th, the boogeyman, four stories on Bow Street. That would be devastating. That would canyonize the city. This is an opportunity to do it right, but let's have real public dialogue, not compartmentalized. Let's have real information. We don't know right now if the city actually would lose this in some means of, you know, if the litigants somehow leveraged this legally. Is that a possibility? Can we rule that out? Can we actually afford this? Have we done that due diligence? These are all substantial questions that we need to answer, otherwise we really shouldn't be making this decision. Now, I think you can tell I'm in favor. $20 million's a lot, but in the big picture, it's really not for this value. And one final thing I'd like to say is that I'd like us to consider that it's not just money that's valuable here. If we did an urban space, if we did get the property, I know Bill Binney's still in the wings. He sincerely is interested in doing a substantial project. That's not brick and mortar. He's very adaptable. He's an award-winning developer. He, I know, is very interested. This would be probably a legacy project for him and his group. So we're only limited, as a comedian once said, by law enforcement gravity, but also capital and our imagination. So I hope, if this is sincere, that we consider all possibilities, we have good dialogue, and it's messaged properly, and we can really move forward that benefits the city beyond just dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is Mark Stettner.
Can everyone hear me?
Loud and clear, Mark.
All right, thank you. This is Mark Stettner, 91 Fairview Avenue, Portsmouth. I would like to recommend that the city move to purchase this. As already stated before, in the big scheme of things, over the 100 years that the city might own this property, plus, it's not a lot of money for the benefit. What we don't want to see is a developer come in with more hotels, five-story buildings, and then when the city wants to disapprove it, this giant company comes in and starts filing lawsuits against the city, which costs more millions of dollars. If we own it, we don't have to worry about that. This is a treasure in the middle of the city. Think of it like a mini Central Park. New York decided many, many years ago to create a Central Park. That's the jewel of New York City. Imagine New York City without a Central Park, but built up. That's what will happen. We'll just have this giant city ever-expanding, and this is not the place to do it. Just buy it. There's many ways of making money off of it. There could be concessions that are leased out. The possibilities are endless, but you lose complete control over what happens to that property if you don't own it. And I highly recommend that the city pursue buying this property, and then we can figure out what to do with it. Think of it as an investment for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, Rick Bexted.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Rick.
Sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I'm sick, but I felt it important, even after 10 o'clock at night, to be able to partake in this. Listening to everybody's comments, the last speaker, several as before that, you know, we had an opportunity when I was on the council last time, when we had heard the news of community campus being sold. And the organization that ran community campus actually had already been in talks with a developer. And we wanted to check it out, and we did. And we ended up purchasing it. And what it did is two things. We weren't exactly sure what to do with it, but number one, it wouldn't be overdeveloped, and we'd be able to have a say. Not only that, but what people don't realize is, we would have lost a place that houses over 300 children, a daycare facility. We had no control over any of that unless we owned it, to be able to keep them as the leases and be able to do that. Could you imagine today, 300 students being thrown out of that school once the sale had gone down and the developer had moved in? We bought it not knowing what we were going to do with it. We bought it because it's the right thing. Now, this council may very well embark on a $40 million excursion on a police station. Think about that. $40 million. And we're still not even sure what the land acquisition is. So you're talking well above $40 million. It gives us a choice. It gives Portsmouth a choice. You know, this lawsuit thing is going to happen whether we own the building or not. We knew that right from the get-go. Two people that have stood on this council knew it very well. I'm still surprised that we ended up where we are, which is right at the beginning again. But we can't lose sight of the fact... We have a say. The mistake we made was, we picked a partner, and we picked a not-so-well partner. I think we could go and look at this in a different way, have the time. As one of the speakers at Gone has said before, I know that revenue of the parking is helping to pay for the overages of the operation expenditures of the McIntyre building during the internship. I also personally talked with the post office master during my time in office as well. But because we were in COVID, we couldn't take the next steps. To go down to DC, make the argument, and get the postmaster and the post office back into a building that's already been remediated of asbestos. We all know that. They could operate there immediately as a tenant, income. You've got parking in the back, income. It would buy us time. I don't think $20 million is something that really is on the table. I think if this is, all we have is 45 minutes, Mayor, to go and make a decision on this, on whether you're going to continue talks, I would urge this council to continue the talks. This isn't purchasing it tonight. This is the start of the process, and I would urge you, this council, to start this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Your Honor.
Counselor Denton.
I motion to advise the GSA that the city will not be proceeding with a negotiated sale.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
If I may. I've been involved in this process as a city councilor for five and a half of the past seven and a half years. In 2016, I was on the council that considered developing the McIntyre at taxpayers' expense, allowing a private entity to develop it at their own expense, or public-private partnership, which was ultimately pursued. In September 2017, four of eight potential developers presented their feasibility concepts to the council, what they thought could be done with it. My favorite I said back then, and I've said ever since, was from Wynn Companies, because they spoke about using affordable housing grants to redevelop the building. However, they self-selected themselves out of that process. At a robust hearing in 2019, many residents spoke against the first Red Gate Kane Plan that called for an indoor-public area with no hotel and no cost to the city. However, at that same hearing, the public overwhelmingly spoke in favor of circumventing the years-long process and for Mr. Binney's unseen plan, where he pledged to pay for a public park. And that night, I remember, I started my comments with, "Our house is on fire. We have kids in cages on our southern border, and we have, in New Hampshire, the highest opioid rate in the country." I simply couldn't relate with all the passion over the McIntyre. Now, like then, I don't relate to the passion regarding this building. With that said, I sincerely want to thank the hundreds of residents who've put their hours into this, the dozens of board volunteers over the past decade who've volunteered their time, and the many staff that dedicated their time on this project. However, I believe it's time to let the building go to private auction. My understanding is that anyone who can do business with the federal government that is interested in developing the McIntyre can bid on it. Those bids could potentially range from proposals like the Wynn Companies' proposal for affordable housing grants to Mr. Binney's unseen plan to use his own money to build a public park.
Counselor Denton? Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be supporting Counselor Denton's motion. You know, a lot of elegant speakers tonight. A lot of people have put a tremendous amount of time into this project. It didn't work at the price of a dollar. I don't need to do any more research to determine on my own that it won't work for $20 million. So, you know, we took a big swing at this project. It had a lot of twists and turns even before COVID hit, then COVID hit, and I think that's why we are where we are today. But I think it's time to let the GSA put it out on auction, and we will return a pretty valuable piece of property to the city tax rolls.
Counselor Tabor.
Thanks, Your Honor. I would like to see us further pursue a negotiated sale, so I wouldn't vote for closing down the process right now. Throughout the seven years of McIntyre, we've had the opportunity to either make downtown worse or make it better. And I think the whole concept of placemaking and revitalizing that current dead space really came alive in the community engagement process we had around the community plan. We had hundreds of residents who did their best to add back the public places that were missing in the original Red Gate Kane Plan, the Market Hall, an observation deck overlooking the river, the indoor winter garden, more appropriate scale on Bow Street, and we stayed true to that process and that vision throughout the restarted negotiations. The city, in the end, had a proposal that had all the public benefits of that dialogue for $6.5 million, and we couldn't get it done. I would just say, Market Square, and I've said this before, was $2.1 million in the 1970s. That'd be $11.2 million today. If the proposed community plan had been half as successful as Market Square, it would have paid for itself many times over and enhanced the city, and it would have cost less than the current cost of Market Square. We tried. We got close. Couldn't pull it off. And so, now, we're being urged to spend no more, turn the 2.1 acres over to a developer in an auction. Well, we know developer's math. If you spend 15 to 20 million in ground costs, you're going to have to seek all the density that CD4 allows you to seek to get the best return. And quite frankly, some people have talked about their grandchildren. I said this to our fellow counselors the other night. I really don't want my grandchildren to walk down a Bow Street that has portwalk-like buildings coming straight up from the sidewalk. So, I would like us, I think we owe it to the city and the residents, many of whom have put in much work on this, to explore the benefits of a negotiated sale. Two ways that it might make sense would be to buy the land and then split the parcel, sell the federal building to recoup costs, and put a park on the rest. We know that freed from the Monument Program, a buyer could put additional density over the post office wing, and that was a restriction we were always laboring against, but it'd make the McIntyre much more valuable, just the building itself. Or we could buy it and repackage it with deed restrictions that keep the character of Bow Street, pull the buildings back, keep them lower in scale, and maybe even ask for some of those other amenities that the community has wanted, and then sell it. In both cases, the city recoups some or all of its costs, and the development protects and enhances the downtown. I don't think we need another public process. We have, we've had two. I think the desires of the public are well-known. And I should be clear there. We need more public engagement in this decision, but I don't think we need another public process around what to do with the property, what to do with the land. I think the public's desires are pretty well-known and pretty well-written down. But I'm talking about just a transfer of possession through city hands that would allow us to control how the sites develop. Now, there's some people, a lot of people, we're all getting letters about this, saying, "No more spending on McIntyre." And I would say to that, possessing some of the most valuable real estate north of Boston for a short period of time to get something better for our downtown is a reasonable proposition and a low-risk proposition. And to those who say the city should keep its hands out of property development, I fundamentally agree with that. But if we ever want any part of this 2.1 acres to stay in the public realm for the public benefit, and we want to tame the scale of what's built there, I think a negotiated sale would be the West Bay to do that. I certainly want us to do better as a city than something that's overbuilt. You know, Dennis Robinson wrote in 2017, "A city that restored a music hall, pulled a submarine into the middle of downtown, and revitalized itself the way it did can do better at McIntyre." So, that's why I would vote against the motion.
Are there comments? Counselor Blaylock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll say I've read all the emails, all the comments we've gotten from the residents. And my family's been involved in this process for a while, but I will be supporting the motion made by Counselor Denton.
Any else? Counselor Moreau?
I've gone back and forth in my head on this for a while now. And I can see the arguments on both sides. I have a high concern of the price tag and a high concern of usability, although Counselor Tabor does make some good points of how we could recoup some of those funds. But I just feel like with all of the emails and everything that we've gotten from people, I think that the weight into the direction of walking away seems to be, you know, more prevalent with most people that I've spoken to or gotten letters from. So, I will support the motion.
Counselor Moreau. Counselor Lombardi.
This has been a hard thing, and I also have seen the emails, heard the comments. I, in many ways, I agree with Counselor Tabor. And I frankly almost don't feel ready to vote because it's, I see both sides of this. I think, I think we're all tired of the McIntyre. I think that, and, but I don't want to make a vote based on being tired of it. I want to make a vote that is what's best for the city. I question whether a developer who buys this building and submits a plan to the planning board, to the HTC, I don't know whether it's zoned properly to accommodate that. So, that's part of why I am leaning toward Counselor Tabor's. So, I'll say that at this point, and I'm, I'll just have to make a choice.
10:30, you know? You're tired. We all are. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We do need a vote to go past 10:30.
I move to suspend the rules to go past 10:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have a question for the city manager. What is our deadline to get back to the GSA on this building, whether or not we want to enter into this negotiated sale process?
I'll take a stab at this, and then you can chime in. We have had regular communication with the GSA. They know we're having a meeting tonight. They are expecting us to report back what the tenor of interest is or the level of interest is from the council, so that they can then understand what their path forward is. Do you have anything to that?
Yeah. So, there's no immediate deadline, if that's your question. They're not asking for a decision on Wednesday when we talk to them again, but they do want to know what the process is and what the timetable would be of that process, and they would like the process to be efficient. So, I hope that answers your question.
Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
It doesn't help.
Did you follow? Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I understand Counselor Lombardi's apprehension, and I appreciate Counselor Tabor's points. You know, the Market Square rebuild was community space. It was sidewalks. It was streets. The Albicore was, you know, I think it was Joseph Saltill, kind of a private thing that happened. I forget the other thing that you mentioned, but that was also a private thing that happened. The city's done some really impressive projects over the last 25 years, the library, the middle school expansion. I don't know if I would have gone to the sewer treatment plant as a good one to call out, but, you know, we've done a good job there. I think those processes have had good results, so it shows we're capable. The problem is, is those were all required things. As a city, we have to have a middle school. As a city, we have to have a library. As a city, we have to have a sewage treatment plant. While it would be nice to have open space and a park at the McIntyre site, it doesn't tick the necessity box. It ticks the want box, and that's my opinion on the project.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a really tough decision for this council. I think everyone here had acted in good faith and hoping that we would build the community plan. And when that fell apart, we were left with this decision. And that, it's very difficult when you have your hopes up for one process, so, and then to have to shift and think about it differently. When it comes to whether or not we should or should not purchase this property or enter into a negotiation with the GSA, I'm weighing that in the context of how does it benefit the city and taxpayers? And spending $20 million on that or $25 million, I don't know what the ultimate appraisal price is for purchasing this property. When we don't have a clear plan for how the city could actually use the property, at least, that's the way that I see it. I don't, you know, it's, we're now in a situation where it would be, we were kind of starting from scratch in how the city would use that property. That's a really tough call, thinking, well, we're going to expend taxpayer dollars for something that, that we don't know ultimately what the end result is. But it also, in some ways, it sends a signal that we don't trust our own zoning and our own process for it to go to sale to someone else, that we think that we're not going to have a good process going through our land use boards, which, as a city, I think that it's important that we trust. As a council, we trust our land use boards to do a good job in reviewing a proposal, that we trust our zoning. And if we don't trust our zoning to be adequate, then we should change the zoning, not necessarily spend 20 to 25 million dollars to make sure we get what we want in a particular location. I think that that's a really critical factor here. If we're unhappy with development processes anywhere within the city, the remedy to that is to revisit our zoning and decide whether or not it's appropriate for a particular location or a particular area, whether that be the downtown or neighborhood or in one of our other districts around Lafayette Road. I don't believe the remedy is that the city should just buy properties in order to keep them a certain way, unless it's something that we want to conserve. It's conservation land that is not developable. In this case, we're talking about a space that's in the middle of the city. And so, in that sense, I don't think I can support spending taxpayer dollars. I think I'm going to trust our land use process and support this motion.
Just a quick question before Assistant Mayor. Did we, do we have an estimate or an appraised value that the city is confident on for a number? Because we'd have to stick a number if we were to use the other motion. We'd have to stick a number in there, or not. Would it be at fair market? How would we determine fair market value for the public hearing is the question.
Well, eventually, you know, the appraisal process would have to take over to, you know, make a final determination of fair market value. The negotiated sale is for their regulations. The federal regulations require that they would sell only at fair market value to the city and considering the highest and best use. So, we have- would sell only at fair market value to the city, and considering the highest and best use. So we have a number of indicators that we've discussed, but they're not absolute appraisals, accurate, 100% accurate appraisals. One comes from our assessed value, and taking their 20% off the fair market value, I think we got to $15 million for the land and buildings. We have a prior appraisal from, I think it was 2015, where, you know, granted, that was a long time ago, in terms of real estate, anyway. So that came in from an appraised, an appraisal at around $9 million. And there's some suggestion that the work that we've done on the community plan has increased the value of that property, maybe putting it into the $20 million range.
Okay. Just from a process question, because we'd have to pick a number for a public hearing, how would we, if this motion were not to carry, and I don't know, the votes haven't, haven't tallied them in my head as people have talked, but I think it's going to be close. What would the, what would the process look like to the GSA if we were to hold a public hearing? Because we have to, we would have to create a number, and then set that number and hold the public hearing on that number, vote that number up or down, but that may not align to the GSA's final number of a fair market value. How would we, how would we, I guess, set the number, and, and how long would it take for us to get a number that we felt confident was in the range of possibility? Or like, within, close enough to fair market value that we could, you know, have a, a healthy argument if the GSA's number was higher and it went to congressional review?
So, again, difficult question to answer. The process, the federal process does not work well with our process of, of a public hearing and having a vote on the exact amount for the appropriation. The two aren't going to overlay exactly, and it's not clear what steps you would have to take. But I think what the GSA is looking for is potentially a purchase and sale, an offer for the property from the city at a certain dollar amount. And then they would engage in their appraisal process. I'm told we have to accept the number that they come up with in the end, so it might be in excess, in which case the city would have to consider whether it's willing to go that much higher, or how much it would be willing to adjust in order to pursue the purchase and sale. But the initial part is really the GSA wanting to understand the city's commitment, the extent of the commitment, and the extent of the willingness to present, participate in the process. And the purchase and sale agreement draft that they sent us would keep us on a timetable of updating them every 15 days. That's how much they want to stay on top of this. They said their appraisal process would take approximately 90 days. And then even at that point, if we came to an agreement, the entire process has to go through congressional oversight. So that's another period of time. So it's very possible you could have a public hearing about whether you want to proceed with some dollar number that allows you to make an offer, and then down the road, you might have to have another hearing in regards to if the fair market value comes out that much higher, and they're not willing to negotiate. You might have to do, have another hearing and another vote.
Okay, so just one more question. If we were to schedule a public hearing to identify funds for acquisition of the property at fair market value, do we have to put a number into that before the, the public hearing happens, or no?
I don't believe so. I think the public hearing would be for the process to determine sort of the, you know, where the temperature is for everybody in terms of how much they would be interested in, willing to invest in that property, and what process they'd want to go through in terms of a, an offer to purchase with probably some informal type appraisals, information that maybe, could be forthcoming for that public, public hearing, something more than, than what we have right now, but it wouldn't be a completely formal appraisal that you would normally engage in. But you might get more information that would come forward for the public hearing.
Okay. Councilor Lombardi?
Oh, Assistant Mayor, sorry. I didn't know, I thought, I looked at you and I didn't see the hand up again.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for those questions. They, they answered some that I had. And a couple of things, just, just to share my opinion. I struggle with both of these motions. One, because it's, it's hard for me to, hard for it to settle with me to identify potential funds when we don't have a number. And it's, I understand that it's, it's a struggle of the, of the federal process. You know, I think it would be a different conversation if they said, this is, this is our number. Because I think when we look at the range, if they're, if we're down at $10 million versus $30 million, you know, those are two very different options. I do see that there could be public benefit there, that we could, you know, really use that space, revitalize this space. I do struggle, though, with, and I don't want to sound like a skeptic, but with the idea of trusting our land use boards, because our land use boards can only control so much. As we know, our land use boards, we cannot say you cannot put a hotel on that property. We cannot say you have to do workforce housing on that property. We cannot say at this point, you can put, there's no upzoning regulation, so we can't say to somebody, you can put four units on your, on your single lot, or eight units. So, so I don't necessarily think it's, it's, at least for me, trusting the process. It's that, it's more understanding that those processes and those boards have limitation of what they can and cannot control. And so I think, to take Councilor Tabor's point, it is really important that we, that we think, in, in both lanes, from a, from an on the boots-on-the-ground standpoint, and from that 50,000, you know, above bird's eye look. And so it's, you know, for me, again, it's hard to really move forward with either of these motions, because I, I think it's worth the conversation, a community dialogue and community conversation of if we purchased this building and we did X, Y, and Z, what does that, how does the community feel? If we purchased this building and the community plan was not an option, how would people feel? If we purchased this building and City Hall was an option? If we purchased this building and a park was an option? If we purchased this building to parcel it and sell it for revenue down the line? But that is, for me, such a hard decision to say no to without numbers, without that conversation with the GSA, which is why I tend to lean towards, you know, my vote for no for this, because I think we do owe it, while I know that, as Councilor Lombardi said, we are all tired of, of this, I think as a community. I think we're tired of the contentious nature of, of, that this project is taken on. But as someone who's downtown pretty much every day, it is an important, important piece of, of parcel. So I think with that, it's, it's hard for me to say no to, to continue in the conversation, but that doesn't necessarily mean a yes to spending the money. So I think that is, that's an important part of this conversation, too, is yes to have the conversation does not, does not necessarily mean yes to, to signing a check.
Councilor Lombardi.
Yes, I, I wanted to respond to, to Councilor Cook, a little bit on the, it's not that I don't trust the land use boards, it's that if it went to a private sale, it would be difficult to change the zoning, I think. Wouldn't it be, I mean, wouldn't that be considered spot zoning to do that?
I asked the city attorney.
You asked me. So we've looked at a variety of possibilities. We have some ideas. I think that we could justify some revisions to the incentives for the overlaid district for community space, you know, changing that, but also depends a little bit about how quickly that land is transferred, and how quickly a new owner would engage the process in, when they're, you know, whether the new zoning ordinance would go into effect before or after, and there may be litigation. So it's not a clean, sorry, none of my answers are.
No, but you said the magic word in there, too, you know, so.
So I'd like to pass the gavel, because I'd like to talk. So I, I understand that it is almost 11:00, so it's a, it's a long night. I think as we've had this conversation, the more that we've had it, I, not necessarily been convinced that it's a good idea to buy the building, I feel more convinced that it's a bad idea to say no at this time, right now. And I say that with the hope that this process has gone on for 20 years, almost to the day. It actually started with a land use board. The HDC received an application from the feds at the time to revamp the federal building. And the HDC said, you know, wouldn't it be nice if you didn't do that, and you built the building out at Pease, and Judd Gregg got some money? He skipped the line and, and used his power in the appropriations committee to get an appropriation that built, or acquired land at Pease for, I think it was $1.4 million at the time. And that was in 2004. And since then, until about 2015, the feds, you know, basically strung us along, saying that we're gonna, we're gonna build this next year. Oh, it's got to be smart, it's got to be a redesign, we've got to, need some more time. It's a tale that's pretty familiar to us right now, but it's a tale that they, they kind of gave us. So what's frustrating to me a little bit in the speed of which this has to happen is that I feel like the feds are now pushing us to make a very strong decision for, for the city of Portsmouth, without us being able to know how much it would reasonably cost us. We've heard, you know, 10, 12, 20 million dollars. It's a big range, and I'm not saying any of those prices are worth the amount spending, but I would like to have an up or down vote on a number that we could say justified. Because one of the issues that the, the HDC and Evelyn Sorrell raised was, was parking, you know? We are going to need likely another parking garage at some point in the city. Where's that, where's that going to be? Now, I, I think the idea of refurbishing that from a, a city hall standpoint might be out of reach now, cost-wise. But the police station, which is a problem that only folks that read the CIP know about, is $38 million in $2,016, you know? If, if that, if that number's gone up as much as the McIntyre's number's gone up, it's going to be quite a bit more than $38 million. And having space allows us that conversation. But I guess my, my gut tells me that making this decision, even if it's a, a positive decision for the city, even if we say, you know, GSA, we're done, which, you know, my old man, I try not to invoke him in, in this conversation too much, because then people find another thing that he said and invoke him back at me. But one of the things that, that he did say is that Portsmouth had no right being in the development business. And when I think of the music hall, I, I think of, I think of that, because we got out of that. We didn't buy it, and a private sale came up. But I think that we're a lot different right now than Portsmouth was in the 80s when they made that decision. And if we can, if we can think about the needs that we have. So if, if there was a, a motion to identify the cost that we were looking to spend, and tell as part of that process that we would first take the necessary time, no more than, you know, it's not a 90-day appraisal process, but to find out, I guess I just don't want to be voting against something that we don't have a definitive price for, because we don't have a definitive value associated with that. But I'll take the gavel back, I guess, then. All right. Thanks, Assistant Mayor.
Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I do hope we at least vote on the motion that's on the floor. I think the Assistant Mayor brought up some great points, but in a sense, also the crux of the problem, which is, some of the community wants to see a park, some of the community wants to see us recoup the costs, some of the community wants to see affordable housing, maybe it's a police station, maybe it's the town hall. I don't think we're ever going to get to a point where we have enough consensus among 22,000 people that we can make a project happen without replaying the litigation, the lawsuits, the animosity that this project has generated. So I, I think the sooner we exit this and focus on the core requirements that government needs to do, the better our community's going to be.
Parliamentary inquiry. If we, if I introduced a motion to table the current vote before us, while, in order to get a figure to help our deliberations, a dollar figure, would that be a way I could proceed?
I need to give that a little bit of thought. I might have to phone a friend.
Your friend is right there.
My friends are right there.
A friend in the back of the room.
I think, I think that that is an appropriate request, but.
Point of order, table?
It's a new move for me. But I think you could table the current, if you get sufficient votes, to table.
Okay.
I'm getting kind of a yes.
It should be a motion to postpone, and it would take precedence.
Thank you. A motion to postpone.
That makes it simple.
But it would not take precedence.
It would not take what?
Precedence.
It would take precedence. So I would move we postpone the vote until we have an estimate of a, a figure involved in the negotiated sale.
Parliamentary inquiry. Second. With this vote, is it a, sorry, is it a majority vote, or is it a two-thirds vote?
I think the motion to postpone would be a majority vote.
Kelly, or Bob, or Suzanne?
Anybody?
Yes, it's a small majority.
Yes.
Councilor Boyler?
I'll just.
Take a second.
Oh, you, yeah, I think the Assistant Mayor seconded.
Given the hour, given after the mayor's comments, I would support postponing this at this time. I, I feel.
We need a definite date, too. Sorry.
I'm scared to move forward with, you know, keep talking McIntyre and such, and go down this rabbit hole, but I don't want to say no, and just because I'm being impatient to, before we hear a number, actual number, so.
Councilor Cook, then Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to be clear that I'm not being impatient, that I would not move to postpone, and the reason that is the case is that we might not have a number for three months or more, and we could enter into an agreement according to what was just explained by the city attorney, the city manager, that we would purchase something and not know what the cost is, and not know for months on end what the cost is. So it's, it's not as if we're going to necessarily have a number given to us anytime in the near future, which means that puts us in a, a situation where we're postponing for a long period of time. We're allocating money for something that we're not even sure what we're going to have in the end, or if we can even execute any planning for that down the road. So I don't see when you would have to postpone to, that's, that's my biggest concern, is that if we vote to postpone, is it, are we voting to postpone till September? I'm not clear on, on when that timeframe is for when we would have any kind of number. I'm not clear on, on when that timeframe is from when we would have any kind of number.
Counselor, Assistant Mayor.
I guess there's, there's a need for clarification. I don't know if this is city attorney or city manager. Is the GSA looking for us to propose a number or are we waiting for them?
We, the GSA will not offer us a number. They're waiting for us to articulate if we want to purchase the property and what price.
Okay.
And as the city attorney outlined, we will both go through concurrent appraisal processes. And if our number is less than their number, they're going to seek their number. And then we'd be, we'd be looking to provide supplemental funding to our.
And at that point, if, if we say appropriated a certain limit and they were, they were asking above that, would we be able to pull out from the, from a purchase and sale agreement?
Oh.
It should be drafted with that opportunity to do so. It's not something that the GSA is going to want to hear.
No, but the GSA has made it clear. They're, they're looking for certainty.
Yeah, I think maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves, because what we're postponing is the vote to tell the GSA we're not interested, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So, all we need for that is, is our best order of magnitude number we can use in the near term to pick up that vote again.
Point of order, I think you need a date to, when you're postponing to.
City manager, how full is May 1st?
Not full enough to accommodate this. I think it's appropriate to, to, if, if it's the will of the council to show interest in the property, it would be appropriate to.
Can I do it quick?
To, to honor that and, and to take the next opportunity, which, which would be the next regular meeting, which is May 1st.
Right. And we, we did quite a bit of work on the ADUs tonight, so that, that puts us in. So, I would amend my motion if the second agrees to postpone until the next meeting.
Second agrees.
Counselor Bagley has a second.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Bagley.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I think the GSA's been fairly clear that they want the council to act quickly. I, I think the council should be the one to make the decision whether we continue or not. Is there a risk if we postpone to May 1st that the GSA would make the decision for us?
Can't, can't speak to that definitively.
Well, yeah. I mean, we can't, can't promise anything, but that's not what they've told us. What they've told us is they understand we have to go through a process, but they want to see us going through that process efficiently and with some, you know, determination to get to an answer. So, I don't think they're expecting an answer tomorrow. I think they're hoping tomorrow they'll know what the next step in the process is and they'll know how long it'll take to get to that next step.
So, I, I understand that to be that probably this is okay, but of course, we can't speak for them.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Moreau.
I'll support the postponement, just because I'm exhausted. And I think we need time to really sleep on this and think about it and come back together again.
I don't know if the answer is going to be any better in May 1st. In fact, it might be worse. But I think it's, it's important if this, the city's involvement in this outside of the land use boards were to end, it's important how it ends. And I think the, the idea that we're, you know, no fault, I mean, we had student government day, which is great, we had ADUs, and we're also kind of on pressure. I don't think if we felt the pressure to hurry up and figure out a plan before we had number, would we have even thought of putting this on the agenda. So, I think that all of the comments that we had, you know, I, I can't say which way I'm going to vote if we postpone, but I do think postponing and having a, a number that we feel confident represents a, you know, a standard deviation close to the final price would be important for the city of Portsmouth to vote up or vote down. I don't want to end the process on at least allowing folks to say that we could have got it for this, we could have got it for that. I think we need to have a number that we vote up or down. And so, for that reason, I hope we can get that through the, the approval or the, the city manager. I know it's a lot of work, but to be able to do that and have that at the May 1st meeting. So, we'll have a roll call vote on postponement.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Denton.
No.
Counselor Moreau.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
No.
Counselor Lombardi.
Yes.
Counselor Boylock.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
No.
Mayor McEckern.
Yes.
Motion passes six to three.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Still have a couple items.
Still have a couple items. Feel like we should have got those through before, because everybody is ready to go home. We have a, a weight of sample motion to approve and accept the wellness reward for $2,000 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, a acceptance of an FY '24 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $529,546. A weight of motion to accept and expand a community development block grant in the amount of $5,029,546 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Elise, for hanging in there.
Elise, you were there for this?
She was. She's online.
Oh, online. Okay. All right. Hopefully. All right. Any miscellaneous? You have one.
Just very quick, I just wanted to state that we had received a letter from Corey Clark, who is resigning from the land use board, and we have extended an invitation to Planning Board member Andrew Simonis, who has accepted. So, I just wanted to make sure that I had said that in a public meeting, that he will join us in our May meeting moving forward.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to thank all the residents, the volunteers, the Trees and Greenery Committee, AJ at the Urban Forestry. We did the handouts of resident trees. It was a nice early morning at 6:30 being there and thank you to Stephanie Secord, who was also there, and all the residents. The trees went so quick, everyone was so kind, and it was a great, it was a great day. And it's really great that we're all out there planting all of those trees.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor, and your.
My favorite committee, man.
Your favorite committee. You fought to get on there and it's a.
I know about the different oaks now. Pat teaches me about parks.
It's, it's impressive. Arbor Day is coming up, correct?
It's my day.
It's your day.
My day.
The 28th, it will be your day. I can't wait. All right. Counselor Boylock.
I just want to thank the mayor for covering the opening day of Little League and throwing out the first pitch, which was a strike. And even though I have two 12-year-olds that can throw much harder than him.
I was never a baseball athlete. All right, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
A weight of motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.